Board, it is Thursday, March 4th, 2021. And the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings for January at the Planning Board of Princeton. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the fourth day of January, and legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the January 6th, 2021 edition of the Trenton Times. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website wwwprinceton.gov. Calendar pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom. And the notice was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of April 2020 and on the sixth day of January 2021. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, all members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise their hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participating screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in order in which hands are raised. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be immediately muted. If you are having difficulty just accessing this feature, use the Q and A dialogue box to let text apart for it now, and they will assist you. We're asking all members of the public to do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. This is, in some sense, is a reorganization meeting, as you'll see from the revised agenda. And I'm going to ask Carrie to read the list of subcommittee appointments, which was released this week. Carrie, would you do that?
Can we do a roll call first?
Oh, okay. You want to do that first?
Yes. Ms. Cappizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. McGowan?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Oakman? Mr. Oakman?
Here, can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
And Mr. Chow?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, can we do the subcommittee appointments? I would like to get that on record.
Yes, okay. We have 2021 committee assignments for the Planning Board. Landscape Subcommittee, the Chair is Julie Cappizoli, and the members are Mr. Cohen, Mr. Texarney, Mrs. Wilson, and Mrs. Gunning. For the Zoning Amendment Review Committee, the Chair is Mr. Oakman. The members are Mr. Cohen, Mr. Quinn, Ms. Sacks, and Mr. Texarney. For the Master Plan Committee, the Chair is Mrs. Wilson. Members are Mr. McGowan, Ms. Sacks, Mr. Texarney, and Mrs. Gunning. The Nomination Committee, the Chair is Julie Cappizoli, and the members are Mr. Oakman, Mr. Quinn, and Mrs. Gunning. And for the Procedures Committee, we have the Chair, Mr. O'Donnell, and Ms. Sacks. And that's it.
Thank you very much. You should all have received a notice of this by email. So if you have questions or anything, please either email me or email Carrie, and we'll straighten things out. So with that, let's go to the back minutes, which were on your agenda. There was a, I had a real puzzle with this one, but Carrie assured me that I had straightened it out correctly. The first one, which were the minutes of June 13th, 2019, is actually June 20th, 2019. Is that correct, Carrie?
No, they were actually, they were on the agenda incorrectly. They are June 13, 2019.
Okay. Any of the others different?
No.
All right. Well, then, let's see if everybody puzzled their way through this one. How about the minutes of June 20, 2019? It was a special meeting. Although, any corrections, amendations? No?
I'll move them.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next one were the minutes of July 23rd, 2020. This was a special meeting. Anybody have any corrections, additions?
Please be advised that Mr. Cohen has already submitted some changes to the minutes.
Do you want to?
Was it those minutes, David?
It was.
Okay.
The July, the July minutes.
Right, those were, those were important edits.
Yeah.
Do you want to present the edits, or do you want to carry that to another meeting? David, what's your feeling about this? No?
I mean, the edits were all for clarity. They weren't taking issue with really the substance of what had happened at the meeting. But some of the explanation of what the affordable housing, the AH6 zone was, and what the Affordable Housing Overlay 6 was, was a little bit garbled in the, in the text. So I just tried to clean that stuff up. I don't, I don't think I have to go into it in more detail.
All right. If the board is prepared to accept it that way, why don't we, if there's no other amendations, can somebody move it, including David's edits as part of it? Someone?
I saw David's edits. I'll move to approve.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. This, oh, and Jeffrey's trying to move in second too, but we still can't really hear you, Jeffrey.
That makes it difficult.
I saw your hand go up, though.
Where are we on this? Because I can't see everybody's hands at this point.
Wait, there is a motion and a second. Julie moved, believe, and I seconded. Mrs. Louise.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Let's see, we're on the minutes. These are October 1st, 2020. Tell me if I'm reporting the right dates now. But anybody have any corrections or amendations on those? No? All right. If there are no corrections, does someone want to move those?
I'll move them.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Owen? All those, that was Owen?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. There's no opposition. We'll pass that on. The last one was October 15th, 2020. This was a regular meeting. And there's a lot of interest in these minutes as well. Anybody have any questions, comments? No? All right. Does somebody want to move those?
I'll move those.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I should point out that we're really at one of those special points where we're just about caught up with the minutes, are we not? Michael, is that right, correct?
We're making great progress.
I can't say we're caught up, but I am, I am working on.
Carrie spent a lot of time into it, and we're really making good progress.
Thank you. I, I know I've whined and complained in the past, and I know we all really, really appreciate catching up with them. It's been, it's been a lot of work, I know. Madam Chair, can I just take us back to the committees for just a minute for sort of an announcement type of thing? I didn't, I just wanted to point out that along with the table of Michael yesterday, along with some background materials for this meeting, there's some text underneath that table that makes clear, among other things, that all of the committee meetings will be publicly noticed and sunshined. And that every member of the board will receive notices of all the subcommittee meetings. And all members of the board are invited and welcome and encouraged to participate in subcommittee meetings. The, there were some subcommittees, particularly Master Plan, where more people expressed an interest in serving than under the Planning Board rules. There are, there were seats for. The Planning Board rules say there should be, there shall be five members of the Master Plan Committee. And the Master Plan Committee has a lot on its plate this year. We want to really begin a thorough systematic overhaul of the Master Plan that will go, it will, you know, probably last for 18 to 24 months altogether. But there will be quite a few meetings. Michael's office will be preparing an RFP and then ultimately selecting a consultant to work with us. But even before that, we'll pull the committee together to talk about the year's work. So I don't want to be long-winded, but maybe I already have. But I wanted to just alert everyone to that and really encourage folks, whether or not you've been appointed to that committee, everyone is welcome to participate. And there will be a lot of meetings and a lot of work. And of course, a really important public process to go through that ought to be interesting and fun and engaging. And so I'm looking forward, as I know others are, to starting that work.
And it's been a long time since the Planning Board has indulged in this exercise, so.
That's right. Many of the elements of the Master Plan are really old. We certainly sunk our teeth last year into the green building.
Does anybody hear me? I can't hear anyone.
We can hear you.
Jerry?
I can't hear anybody.
Is your mute off?
It is, because we can hear him.
Yeah.
His ears may have come unplugged or something.
Yeah. Or maybe his.
Well, it's very important.
Button on his keyboard is pressed or something.
Jerry be able to participate in this. Can we take a moment and check on that to see if we can find an easy fix?
He could call in, too.
I, I'll, I'll reach out to Jerry. I'll reach out to him.
Okay.
Folks hear me with this microphone?
Very low, Jeff. Jeffrey?
Anyone else?
Volume is very low.
Anyone else having problems? Well, let, let me move on on the agenda that we're up to the findings of fact. This is a resolution. And this is preliminary final major site plan from January 7th, 2021. I assume you all got that, read it, and so on. Okay. And with that, that moves us up to the application for this evening, which is that trustees of Princeton University preliminary and final major site plan is the art museum.
Leave the meeting and then come back in, and hopefully this will work for me the second time. Okay? Anybody could hear that?
Wanda, should we, we actually vote to, should we vote to accept the memorandum of resolution?
We should. I just.
Until Jerry's back.
Well, we really need to include Jerry in the approval of this findings of fact. And that makes it a little bit difficult if he's left the meeting.
Oh, he's, he's trying to come back in. So if we want to wait a moment, let's see. Here he is.
There he comes.
Connecting.
Audio.
You're on mute, Jerry. There you go.
Can you hear us, Jeffrey? Doesn't look like it.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi.
Nope, he's not.
He's not on.
Having him call in by phone will be the best thing.
Yeah. Carrie, can you call him and tell him to use his phone? Believe his camera on, but.
Actually, I don't have his direct number on me. Sorry, I was gonna write him.
Wait a minute. Which number do you need?
Cell phone.
If I have it, I probably have it, too.
I just, I just emailed him to make sure that his, his computer speaker isn't muted. Sometimes you hit the button. And it could also be the audio setting. He's got the wrong speaker for his computer selected. I don't, I don't have his cell phone.
Well.
Hey, Jerry, it's Louise.
Yeah, Louise.
We can, we can hear him now.
Yeah, we could always hear him. He couldn't hear us.
That's right.
Yeah. Right. Okay.
Okay, do.
He can just put his phone on speaker.
Is that what you're gonna do? Put it on speaker, or?
So he can hear us.
Yeah.
He, he should, he should call in with the telephone on the call-in number. That's to clean this.
Yeah, I'm here.
Can you hear us, Jerry?
Okay.
Okay.
715.
He's not even close.
No, I have that, I have that anyway from the, from the notice.
So I just muted him, and I don't know. I can't unmute him now.
Right.
Working on it.
Carrie, is he gonna, do we know if he's coming in on his, on the phone line?
Yes, he's going to call. I gave him one of the numbers from the bottom of the meeting Zoom notice. And he has that notice. So he's got the, the other numbers as well, the codes. Fingers crossed.
Yeah, it's like 25 numbers, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a lot of numbers.
It's a lot of numbers.
We do have a 908 phone number that just showed up on the panelist list, but he's, but it's muted.
His number is, his cell number is six, well, I'm not gonna read it out. Not a 908 number.
Why don't you read that in, read that into the record, Madam?
The 908, the 908 number is actually Mark Gabriel.
Well, at what point do you think we should move along? Anybody? You think we're gonna master this problem? No one?
I think he's still on.
We could, I would think we can adopt the resolution without Jerry here. Is there a reason why?
I think that's fine. No, that should be, it should be fine, especially if there's no major changes to it.
Yeah.
Are there? Anybody know?
I'll move it.
Okay, is there a second? Somebody?
I'll second. It's Julie.
Julie, yeah. All right. Is there any discussion, anybody? Right, hearing none. All of those in favor of the resolution or findings of fact?
Aye.
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 And opposed? Okay.
Carrie, you have to bring Jerry over from attendees to panelists. He's the 609 number at the top of the list.
Do we not have Justin with us tonight?
Yeah, Justin is here. I, Justin's not letting me move him over, which is very strange, because I'm the host.
Yeah, I'm here. It's not allowing me to do that either.
Okay, so you can hear me by, by telephone?
Yeah.
Yes. Can you hear us?
Yes. I can hear you through the computer.
Okay, we're in business.
All right, good. Talk fast.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that brings us to this evening's application, which is the trustees of Princeton University. It's a preliminary and final major site plan for the art museum on Elm Drive. It's block 4501, lot 101. File number P 2020-835P. And it's M L U L 33121. And having read all that, I think we will probably start by having.
Chair, would you like me to do a brief introduction?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could. And I'm getting a bit of an echo of my own voice. Michael, if you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So it's one in front.
Can I raise a procedural question before you start?
Yeah, sure.
And no offense intended, but in our last one, the Chair stepped down because of at least a claimed conflict by an objector. I just wonder if you guys had given any more thought to that at this point, as to whether this is a conflict or not. It just, it just seems, might be awkward to step down in one unless you've come to some new conclusions, Jerry.
Well, our feeling was, and I did talk to Wanda about this, was I had ruled with, with respect to Tiger that there was no conflict. She felt uncomfortable proceeding because a number of neighbors and others had, had raised comments and concerns. But I didn't think she had a conflict. And in fact, she had participated in university applications before that, after her husband retired from the faculty.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make it, you know, have that clear on the record, at least. Thank you.
Thank you.
No offense intended, Wanda.
Just puzzled.
Jerry has been muted again. I'm sorry to break in. I don't know whether, there you go.
It's fine. He did. Okay.
Are you okay? Are we okay now? Is everybody?
Yes, I think so. Should I go forward, Chair?
Why don't, yes, Michael, why don't you start on it, at least?
Okay. I will be concise, and I will be quick in my introduction. Good evening, everyone. As you know, we've been spending a lot of time at the university on their evolving east campus. Tonight, we move back to the historic Central Campus. And the site is the current McCormick Hall, which is the home of the Princeton University Art Museum, as well as programs in art and, and other historical aspects of academic study there. And the proposal before you is to largely replace the university museum with a new and larger facility, considerably larger. The one section of the existing complex that is proposed to remain is the Northerly Wing, which is, houses the Mark Twain Library. And I'm sure the applicant will go into detail about that. The site, in case you're not familiar with it, it is generally south of Nassau Hall.
We just lost Michael.
Michael, we just lost. I got it, I got it. The gremlins got me. To the east is Prospect House and Gardens. To the south is Brown Hall. To the west, to the west is Dodd Hall. And as I said, it's south of Macosh Walk. The diagonal walk, which you'll be hearing about later, I'm gonna talk about it in relation to the Master Plan, cuts by the southwestern corner of the current facility. And I wanted to note that it's about a 4.5 acre project site, and the new building will be about 142,000 square feet. The proposed use, the building is located, and the campus is located in the section of the campus is the E2 zone of the former borough. It's a permitted use for the university. And the application does involve some variances requested for signage for the museum that will exceed each of the signs. It's actually five signs that are proposed, each of which exceeds the maximum sign area of 16 square feet. So I'm sure the applicant will go into detail about that. So I think that's good enough for an introduction, and I'll turn it over to the applicant to get into their presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like me to proceed, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Richard Goldman of Faygre, Drinker, Biddle and Wreath. And I represent the university, the applicant. We're really excited to be here. This is a very, very special project, significant impact project. I'm not gonna spend any more time. Michael gave you the, the big overview. We have a very, very thorough presentation. So I'd like to turn it over to Ron McCoy, who's the university architect, and he can walk you through the presentation. He'll, he'll need to be sworn.
Ron, if you could raise your right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
So it's one in front. Please state, please say your full name and spell your last name.
Ron McCoy, M C C O Y, university architect at Princeton. Can I suggest that we swear in James Stewart also? Because James and I are gonna share the presentation. We'll be back and forth a lot.
Sure. Is he on the screen?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, yes. If you could raise your right hand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about the gift will be the truth?
I do.
So it's one in front. Please say your full name and spell your last name.
James Stewart, spelled S T E W A R D. And I'm Director of the Princeton University Art Museum.
Perfect.
Carrie, can you give me permission to share my screen?
Sure.
Oh, Carrie.
Yes, I will. I will.
Jerry's missing, too.
Okay, thanks. I assume everybody can see this. So I'm going, I'm gonna begin. So we're pleased, obviously, as Rich said, to share this very important project with you. We look forward to the discussion following the project. As I said a minute ago, James and I will provide an overview of the project, and we will lead the presentation. We also have some of our consultants who will provide testimony. James Corner, our landscape architect and principal of the firm, James Corner Field Operations. And Mark Gabriel from Niche Engineering will be providing testimony during the presentation. And Mark Gabriel from Nitch Engineering will be providing testimony during the presentation. And we have staff and others available to answer any detailed questions that might be necessary. I'm going to begin by just identifying.
I'm just going to interrupt you.
Oh, yes.
Have this virtually marked as exhibit A1.
Okay, okay. And now we're on slide number two of A1. We just briefly want to introduce the architectural team that we have working on the project. It's a team that has worked together. They each have deep experience in museums and art projects. And they are currently working together on the Studio Museum in Harlem. On the right, you have an example of work from Cooper Robertson, one of the architects on our team. And on the left, you have the work of David Ajay Associates, the other architect on our team. And at the beginning of the process, you may have seen in some of the staff reports that the state of New Jersey had not finalized the Ajay Associates license in New Jersey. We're happy to report that that license has been accepted and finalized by the state of New Jersey. I'm going to now turn it over to James, who will talk really about the mission-driven purpose of this project.
Thanks, Ron. So I want to actually begin first with thanks to the commission for the opportunity to visit with you. This is a project that I think it's fair to say has been in gestation for about 30 years. More seriously, in maybe the last half dozen years. And it grows out of the fact that, as I hope many of you know, the art museum, past and present, has been one of the most public-facing and publicly welcoming elements of our university campus. A magnet, just as the campus is itself a magnet. The project grows in part out of dramatic growth in academic engagement, overall attendance, and signature programs in recent years. For example, use of the museum's collections in university teaching has grown in recent years by over 500%. For over a decade, we have been forced to limit the number of school visits we allow due to space constraints. Signature programs now regularly draw as many as 2,000 visitors on a single evening. And over the last decade, attendance has more than doubled to over 200,000 visitors a year. Alongside that, that human issue is the fact of our extraordinary collections. I have long argued that the global reach of the art museum's collections is simply unparalleled under a single roof on any university campus. The collections now number over 112,000 works, of which only about 2% has been able to be on view at any single moment. Equally problematic is providing teaching and research access to the collections that are not on public display. So the project seeks to address and resolve some of those very critical problems. What you see on the screen is a short selection of key project goals that have been identified really from the outset of the project and that in a sense act as markers of success. Providing a gateway to the university's intellectual resources, not only for the university community, but for visitors from far and near. To function as a center for both the visual arts and the humanities. Enhancing access to the visual arts, including, as I've already suggested, significant increased display of and access to the collections. Grappling with the fact that our collections are so globe-spanning and seeking to do so in a more equitable way than we have historically been able to do because of a facility that has created some very significant, what I will call upstairs-downstairs problem. We also seek very much to deepen the use of the museum and its resources in teaching, research, and public engagement and provide great welcoming and educational experiences for all of our audiences. Let's go to the next. Among the key benefits of the project are the ones you.
James, James, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you identify the page, that is the slide number as you testify on it?
Oh, sure. So I'm on page four. Among the key benefits for the project are creating architecture that enhances accessibility to the museum and overcomes barriers to participation. The historic building we occupy has evolved over many decades in a rather piecemeal way that creates significant accessibility challenges and is itself inherently inward-looking in many respects where we seek to be outward-looking. Creating intentional architecture worthy both of the quality of the collections and indeed of our campus. Creating architecture that is of our time, even as it responds to the complex environment of our campus, something that Ron, I know, will speak to at some length. Enhancing access to the collections. I've already mentioned the importance of trying to place the many cultures with which we engage on a more equitable footing. And a key to this project is retaining the proximity between the art museum, the Department of Art and Archaeology, and Markwan Library, which is our fine arts library. We are each among, I think, the 10 best of our typologies in the United States. And I often argue that our greatness in part arises from our collectivity and retaining that proximity is enormously important. Let's go to the next.
Okay, I will pick it up here. We are on slide five, which is a transition slide, beginning to talk about the planning context. I just want to pause here just for a second and just give you a flavor of how this presentation will be orchestrated. Obviously, we are designing this building from the outside in and from the inside out. I'm going to talk about some of the planning context and I'll talk about other exterior architectural issues. James, obviously, as the leader of the museum, will talk about the inside out. But throughout the process, we have been, it's been a very rich process where these two things, the kind of institutional needs from the inside out and the campus making from the outside in have found, I think, a kind of great harmony in the creation of the museum. I'd also just say that the museum was identified in the university's strategic plan as an important center of humanities on the campus. James has done a strategic planning for the art museum. And this comes out of a lot of strategic planning efforts to be realized through the art museum. So I'll begin with slide six here, talking just a little bit about the location. And to answer a question about why here. This is obviously an incredibly important location to be in the, near the center of the historic campus. We are only steps away from Nassau Hall. We are just a few minutes away from Nassau Street or from University Place and from Washington Road. It is in the center of the humanities, heart of the campus. To the east of the building, to the north of the building is the administrative heart of the campus. And to the west of the building are the residential colleges, the heart of the residential colleges. It's also important to note, it's immediately adjacent to downtown Princeton, which benefits the businesses because many of the visitors, obviously, are combining visits to the town and to the museum as they spend and plan their days in Princeton. Now I'm on page six and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the footprint of the building. And just to recognize that it's already one of the larger footprints on the Princeton campus. And in expanding this and maintaining the central location, the architectural challenge really became, how does one ban this building in this footprint and respect the more delicate scale of buildings that surround this particular site? I'll walk through that and describe the design. The solution to that challenge is really illustrated here on slide eight, which is a kind of diagrammatic explanation of the concept of the museum rendered into a series of pavilions. It's important to note that this central pavilion just off of the Kosh Walk is the Markwan Library. And that's the portion of the building that is remaining. The remaining pieces of the Cram Building from its original history, it had been, you know, other generations of the project had been demolished in previous generations. But that remaining portion of the Cram Building is taken away. And really, the site entirely, other than the Markwan Library, is a new construction. But you'll see that around then, the perimeter are arrayed, the gallery pavilions. And those gallery pavilions are all elevated above the ground to maintain maximum porosity at the ground level. A couple other key concepts to describe here, picking up on this idea of porosity, is the idea of creating the museum so that it has access on all four sides. And so you'll see this north-south walkway, which is currently an existing walk, actually goes through the building in its existing location and continues to the portal of Brown Hall. We've also created an east-west walk, so that there's porosity from east to west, going through the middle of the project and touching on the education center and the grand hall, which we will, we will talk about in a minute. And then also importantly, is from the very beginning, the importance of this diagonal walk, which happens on a natural escarpment that runs through the campus from the northwest to the southeast. And is a very important passage throughout the campus, really kind of stitching the campus together. Now on slide nine, and to talk a little about the architectural context. Princeton has a very rich tradition of building architecture in the spirit of the time. James mentioned that this is a contemporary building. But it's a building that resonates with the history of architecture throughout the campus history. One of those key elements of that architectural history is the verticality, which is expressed in all sorts of architecture, the classical architecture with Hall on the right. Obviously, the collegiate Gothic architecture, which is with many examples. Other recent contemporary examples such as the trains, the Dinkie Station and Robertson Hall from the 60s. So the challenge architecturally is not only one of scale, but also one of meaning and connectivity to the traditions of the Princeton campus, but also in a way that marries a kind of memory with a sense of innovation. Another aspect of that Princeton tradition of campus making and architectural making is the issue of episodic space. And I'm on slide 10 now. This is just a handful of many, many more arcades and portals that one has on campus to experience the campus. Maybe of note is the one on the upper right, which is the primary portal through Brown Hall. So we're back would be to the museum here, we go through Brown Hall and out the other side to Kyler Hall. So that north-south axis that I talked about, the campus walk that goes through the center of the museum, it really picks up on this tradition here. In the middle and bottom here, you see the existing walkway that goes under a breezeway, connecting Markwan Library on the left to the Department of Art and Archaeology on the right. Now, I'm going to hand it off back to James for slide 11 here.
So this speaks to a point I've actually already mentioned in passing. And that is both the fact that our collections are maybe the most diverse under a single roof and really trying to understand and contend with the responsibility and advantages of having such extraordinary and diverse collections in ways that allow us to tell new narratives that are germane to the 21st century and that overcome the unintended hierarchical nature of the current building. And out of this therefore has grown a significant commitment in this project that I share and David Ajay shares, to find ways of putting the collections in direct dialogue with each other by placing the vast majority of the galleries on a single level. And you'll see in a moment how we plan to achieve that. One of the key issues here as well, even though the images you see on slide 12 here would appear to be very diverse in their architectural embellishments, is how important interior experience is to the success of a museum and the success of our display function. The four images here, all of them important sources and inspirations for David Ajay. Even though those embellishments may differ, there are certain shared fundamental characteristics, including the importance of bringing natural light into gallery spaces, thinking volumetrically, and thinking about how to vary space from one room to another in order to help assure that the visitor experience is a positive one and that the visitor remains refreshed throughout what will inevitably become a more time-intensive experience of the museum.
Okay, now we're on slide 13 and I just, this is a closer view of site plan or a kind of existing conditions of the site. Just reiterating the issue of porosity and the multiple entrances. The one with the little sort of peach-colored strip here, that will be the main entrance to the art museum from the north. And as I said, it's along that axial walkway that goes through Brown Hall. And there'll be a southern entrance on that north-south walkway. On the east, there'll be an entrance from the Dodd Hall side that goes to the west and from Prospect House and Sherre Green, there'll be another entrance. Back up on Macosh, there's a separate entrance here, which will bring visitors to the Department of Art and Archaeology and to Markwan Library. So we retain the close connection of the build, of those departments with the museum physically, but they also achieve their own identity with an entrance that is on the other side of Markwan Library from the art museum entrance. And then finally, on the south side, the southeast corner of the museum is the serviced entrance, which is adjacent to the loading dock, which we'll talk about a little bit later. We're going to, now we're on the transition slide between, we're on slide 14. We're going to talk about the building program and I'm going to ask James again to talk us through, this is slide 15.
So the fundamental message from this slide is that every area of the museum's operations is targeted for growth through this project, but not equally. And the areas of particular investment very much respond to our most pressing issues, including the shortcomings of the existing facility, as well as trying to anticipate what our needs are going to be for the next generation or longer. So that you see here, for example, in three key operational areas that museum educational spaces are anticipated to grow dramatically, in part because this is a tremendous shortcoming of the present facility, as is true of visitor amenities. Those of you who have experienced the existing museum building will know we have almost no spaces for visitor amenities apart from a retail store. And the idea here is again to create a more welcoming environment that encourages not only visiting but lingering. Exhibition area is proposed to grow significantly, but somewhat less dramatically, in part in order to achieve a more balanced set of operations. We'll talk a bit later about some of the strategies we will pursue in order to assure that collections access of the kind I've already been mentioning grows more dramatically than the actual volumetric space increase.
Okay, now we're on slide 16 and we're going to, we've been looking at site planning up until now. And now we're going to look at some of the building plans. And to pick up on the vocabulary and some of the things that we talked about on the site, you'll see here, this is now picking up at the entrance off of Macosh Walk on that campus walk that runs north-south through the building. And you'll also hear us talk quite a bit about how the galleries are lifted up off of the ground. So that allows for maximum transparency and porosity at this ground level. As you come in this entrance from Macosh Walk and from the north, immediately to your right would, will be the museum entrance area and an exhibition ground, little exhibition space here. Then, as you get more to the middle of that campus walk, you'll have the museum store and the grand hall flanking the east-west walk, which takes you back to Prospect House and to Sherre Green. And along that east-west walk, one would encounter the education center. The blue area at the south, near the loading dock, is then the back-of-house area for the art museum. Now on slide 17, we've come up a level. I'll point out here that there's a slight topography change that's being reflected here. But it's at this level that really the entrance to the Markwan Library and the archaeology department would be, as I said, on the east side of the existing Markwan Library. The main stair, the grand stair that comes up from the ground level arrives at this sort of arrival gallery right here on the second level. These, and you'll see all the galleries with, that have these numbers in them are typically referred to as the pavilion galleries. And they have high ceilings of 18 feet to the underside of the structure. So there's a point here of orientation as you arrive at that second, at that second level. We'll also, you'll hear us talk a lot about the word lens. We use the word lens to describe these moments of vistas in and out of the museum between the primary pavilion galleries. And as James will say later, it's also important to point out that everything between the pavilion galleries is also exhibition space. So really, the entire second floor is dedicated to exhibition space. At the southern end of that area, the exception to the exhibition space is the conservation suite. And James can describe that a little bit also as we get through the presentation. Now on slide 18, we've come up to the third floor and we're at the upper level of all of the pavilion galleries. As I said, they're double-height spaces. The stair, the grand stair continues up on this level. And it arrives at a cafe on the third floor, which opens out to a terrace, which has views of the campus. And also on this third floor, there's a suite of offices organized primarily around an interior courtyard for the. for the art museum, and similarly, a suite of offices again organized around the interior courtyard for the Department of Art and Archaeology. Moving to slide 19, this just gives a little bit of orientation to the the volumes of the buildings and gives you a three dimensional idea of how the pavilion dimensions and proportions fit nicely with the context of existing buildings such as Wig and Clio or or other buildings that are surrounding this part of the campus. This gets back to that issue of how to solve the challenge of expanding the museum, but also maintaining a character that is suitable for the central part of the of the campus. You'll also see here the diagonal walk, and we'll show more images of this through renderings. The diagonal walk goes underneath the pavilion on the southwest corner. We explained how the pavilions sit above the ground, and in this case, it's an open air passage that maintains the the experience of that south of that of the diagonal walk through the southwest corner and on to the gardens that are sort of south and west of Prospect Gardens. Now on slide 20, this is a bit more of a diagrammatic explanation of what we called those lens moments, which is the spaces between the Pavilion Galleries that that are designed to capture particular references and views and vistas back to the campus. Again, one of the early motivating goals of the project was that partly to avoid museum fatigue, but also to remind everybody of the kind of amazing quality of the campus was to consistently provide moments where they were were sort of refreshing views, sort of aha moments when one would leave a gallery between one of the Pavilion Galleries and the next and have opportunities for special exhibits in those areas, views out to the campus and views into the campus. Sometimes they're framing important landscape moments, such as the Don Redwood that we preserved on the east side of the campus or the woodland view into the gardens behind Prospect or just other other vistas throughout the campus. On slide 21 now, just describing the vertical height of the building, we're taking a section through the building, looking to the west. So Makosh Walk would be in the north is on the right here, Brown Hall to the south. And we're taking a section through that that art walk. And this shows how the space of the artwork opens up into two story spaces along the art walk. This is the grand, the grand stair location at the northern part of the building. And then near the grand hall, the space opens up again so that as one is just walking through the building as a part of a daily daily passage, you can look up and see the collections of the of the museum. And the museum museum begins to kind of turn itself inside out to the public. So you always have a sense that you're in the museum, even though you might just be passing through the museum. You'll see that we are well below the zoning height, which is at 60 feet. And in this drawing, you begin to see the kind of skyline of the roof scape of the chimney pots of the of the residential halls further to the west. Slide 22 is a transition slide to site planning and landscape design. And I'm going to say a few things here and also introduce James Corner. We're on slide 23 here, and I wanted to say a couple of things about here, just about this slide. Again, reiterating the campus connectivity, the diagonal walk, and talking a little bit about some of the comments that we received in our discussion with Sprab. There were some concerns about the hardscaping on the west side of the museum. And I think that we didn't provide enough context for that conversation, because while we do have terraces here on the west side of the museum for programming events and for daily gathering or or places of sort of reflection. In the scale of the overall campus, you'll see that they're they're really relatively minor areas of of page surface compared to the context, which is overwhelmingly green and covered with shade trees. On slide 2024, this is a bit more of an explanation of those terraced trays. We're looking here at a roof plan of museum. And the dark gray here is the is the area of the of the paved terraces on the west side of the museum. This intermediate ghosted color of white shows the outline of the Pavilion Galleries that hover above that that series of trays. And so a lot of those tray areas are are covered for shade and also for events. But they're also not particularly areas that would be very successful for planting landscape. On 25, I'm just going to talk about some of the opportunities to provide bicycle parking. We'll have more information when James has his comments, James Corner has his comments. But the biking biking spaces are distributed around the perimeter of the art museum, reflecting the idea that there are multiple entrances into the art museum. When we met with Sprab, they encouraged us to try to find more bike parking spaces, and we've identified additional bike parking space here for 18 bikes on the south side of Wig that can be created.
These Ron?
Yes.
Are these on the plans or they'll be added to the plans?
They'll have to be added to the plans that were submitted because we we went we went searching after the Sprab meeting. It's really just that, just that one area to the north behind Wig that that will have to be added.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, now we're on slide 26, and I'd like to introduce James Corner, as I said, principal of James Corner Field Operations. He'll have to be sworn in, and then he will, he and I will tag team a little bit through the the landscape slides.
And he's here.
Yes, I believe I'll need to be sworn in.
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or firm, please say your full name and spell your last name.
James Corner, C O R N E R.
Okay, and Rich, you'll you'll qualify him?
Yes. James, would you describe for the board briefly your credentials?
Yeah, I'm a professionally licensed landscape architect with over 30 years of professional experience. I'm registered in New Jersey and 15 other states in the United States. Our primary office is in New York City. We've been working with Princeton University since 2018 on a number of other projects across the campus as well as this one.
We would, we would offer James Corner as an expert in landscape architecture.
I guess I accept his credentials, and I can't see.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. It's been a great pleasure to work with James with the museum as well as with Ron and his team with the university and their architects, David Ajay and Cooper Robertson. This is a very important project in the center of the campus. And from a landscape architectural approach, our job has been to try to integrate this building into the context of the larger campus to ensure that it has green surroundings, that it has an arboreal feel with ample trees and canopy, strong seasonal expression with plantings, and has a variety of garden-like settings, much smaller, more intimate settings related to the building. So this diagram here shows the northern entry area, which would be a sunken garden in relationship to the entry areas and the cafe. On the southwest area are what we're calling the event terraces, which also incorporate the diagonal walk across the campus. There's a rain garden to the south, which is also used to collect storm water and to return water to the aquifer. And on the eastern side is a variety of plantings that are very soft and arboreal. They protect a lot of existing trees, including a very majestic and mature red dawn wood. And to relate that eastern side to the Prospect House and to the arboretum just across the way. And with Makosh LA, of course, we're simply continuing the beauty of Makosh Walk along the east-west axis next. And as Ron has already explained, there are numerous entrances into the building from all sides. This is an effort to stitch the building into the campus to respect where existing walks and corridors and movement ways are, and to ensure that the building is is fully integrated, not only in terms of planting and greenery, but also in terms of circulation and walks. All pathways are 100% accessible, below 5% in slope, and multiple points of access that that are fully accessible. Next.
James, I'm going to explain the next two slides and then get let you get back to to the description of the landscape. But we did want to show the strategies for bus drop off and also the location of Tiger Transit stops and 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 the locations of those relative to the museum. Slide 28, yeah. The bus drop off is on Prospect here using the front of Robertson Hall. And then that gives us a controlled traffic light for schoolchildren to cross that that particular area. And then we have Charlie Tennyson available to answer questions later about the operations of the transit system. But the the simple message is that individuals who need access to this campus, who need accessible access to the campus can either contact the museum directly or our transportation and parking services to arrange drop off and pickup at at the art museum. That's the primary way that if anyone needs to do that. Otherwise, there are the around the perimeter of the campus, there are Tiger Transit bus stops on east and west. And then there's the bus stop on Nassau. The next slide, slide 29, something shows also the visitor parking. We have abundant parking in evenings and weekends, and the weekends are the primary time for visitors at the art museum, particularly up near Nassau here behind Ben's behind Thomas Suites. And then at the southwest corner of the campus, we have visitor parking as well that we have a capacity of well over 500 for for visitors. So now I'm going to go to slide 30 and get it back to James.
So if you zoom in just a little bit more detail, this is the northwest corner. You can see the entry in the middle, which is the primary north, south art walk. And that's a in internally, that's a significant lobby with a cafe, and it opens into what we're calling the northern, the 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 northern piazza, the northern garden. It's a seating area with movable tables and chairs with a variety of seasonal plantings around to make it feel very comfortable. And you can see where we have the number one on the left is the relocation of the famous Starn sculpture. So it's being relocated in what will we think will be a very prominent prestigious location for that beautiful sculpture and will also help to frame the various entrances in this area. Next. Just moving south to the southwest corner of the building, this is a blow up detail of the terraces. The terraces are really for a variety of events that the museum might hold, various galas and festivals and markets and other events that they want to host throughout the year. Some of those terraces are underneath the overhangs of the building, so they're weather protected. Others are out outside under the sky. And you can see the white dashed line is the diagonal walk, which allows for the continuity of movement across the campus.
That was slide 31, and now we're on slide 32, and I think James Stewart is going to talk a little about the events that are that are hosted at the art museum on a regular basis.
Yes, so so really this amplifies what James Corner just said, and that is that for years now we have moved many of our programs outdoors, obviously primarily in the better weather months of the year. But these are programs that really require a quite significant variation in in scale and therefore in in site opportunities ranging from, as I described earlier, signature events such as our summer picnic or the Nassau Street Sampler that might welcome as many as 2,000 guests on a single evening to things that are much more intimate like outdoor yoga or more intimately scaled performance programs. So this is what you see is really a reflection of what we have done in the past, which we certainly expect will be amplified significantly in the future. And to underscore the importance, not only of those event terraces on the west side, but of more intimate outdoor spaces that are sort of nestled up against the building at various moments, really on all four sides. This speaks, slide 33 really speaks to, again, that southwest portion or or the the event terraces. And the three images you see, someone quipped to me the other day, no, these are, this is not the socially distant version on the left and the crowded version on the right. These are events of different scale to suggest, among other things, the necessity of creating terraces of this scale. It is our intent that reunions will return to this location and need to take advantage of the combination of hardscaping and scale. Obviously, one of the benefits of the overhangs is that a number of outdoor events can be hap can happen under these really kind of amply lifted sites without having to do outdoor tenting and so forth, which I think will make it much easier for us to host an increased number of activities outdoors through the year.
Okay, back to James Corner on 34.
And moving to the northeast corner of the building, you can see on the left, number one is a bluestone paved entrance into Markland. Number two, along the top, is a reinforcement of the LA, the tree canopy LA along Makosh. Number four shows Prospect Drive, and in that zone is the preservation of a number of significant trees. Number three highlights the existing Dawn Redwood tree. And next.
Sorry.
In the southeast corner is that softer woodland area that relates to Prospect House and Prospect Gardens. Again, there are some trees here that are preserved. There's a sloping lawn called the East Lawn, which is related to that eastern entry. But the East Lawn is also designed so people can sit on it, and there can be potential performance, small performances and small events in the space below. The meandering path is a curve linear pathway that meanders through the woodland and connects people from Prospect Drive down to the south.
If I may interject a comment about the East Lawn to give you a sense of scale. It is scaled for a seated outdoor event of up to 200. So you can see it is much more intimate and integrated into the to the woodland and landscape environment.
That was slide 35, and now this is slide 36.
And this rather technical drawing, but it does show some of the constraints we have on the southern side of the building. All those purple lines indicate a truck turning radii. A number of trucks are required to service the building to provide art exhibits and art changes as well as other functions and service requirements of the building. And you can see that we have four ADA parking spots and the rain garden there is in the middle, that is part of a functioning stormwater provision for the building.
Now slide 37.
This diagram just indicates the general paving palette. In the in the darker orange, you have a concrete pavers. In the lighter tone, exposed aggregate concrete, the blue tone is bluestone, and the gray tone is asphalt.
Maybe if could you go back Ron just for a second to 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 make a comment? You know, we tried to point out earlier that one of our design objectives was to create a building of all fronts and no backs. That isn't literally possible in the context of an art museum, because among other things, we have to have a loading dock because of the transit of irreplaceable art objects. If you Ron can just point out again with your cursor where that is. But it really bespeaks. But it really bespeaks the degree to which I think we've been 95% successful by really camouflaging that and trying to return the south side to a more pedestrian environment, even given the necessity of being able to move trucks delivering art into and out of the space.
And James, James, before you move on, the the nature of the trucks that will come to this loading dock are generally university trucks that are moving art back and forth. Isn't that correct?
That is, it is both things. We, because the majority of our collections are going to be stored as they are now in an offsite location, there will be significant movement of objects into and out of the building. But we also rely on commercial fine art handlers, particularly in relation to incoming shipments related to temporary exhibition. So it's really both a hand.
And and we'll have a significant amount of control over the timing and numbers of trucks that.
Yes, that that is wholly controlled and calendared for a host of reasons. Not least, of course, providing for the security of the art in transit.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So this diagram speaks to the existing bicycle parking spots on the site today. 67. And next. And here you can see that we're increasing the availability of bicycle parking spots to 108.
Slide 39.
Yep, right.
And most of these are simply by expanding existing spots as well as providing new ones where we can.
Right. I think I misspoke earlier. There are additional bikes that have been added to some of these, some of these locations to just increase the capacity. So this will all this will have to update our bike parking plan. Moving on to slide 40.
This is relevant to the site plan application where three additional replacement trees are required. 14 are planted on site and 24 will be planted offsite. In the plan, the blue triangle shows trees to be relocated. The green triangles show their proposed location. The red trees are to be removed. And the red with yellow are trees to be removed by others for separate Princeton University projects. And of course, tree protection fencing will protect the trees during construction. And this is just
41.
An indication of where those replacement offsite tree planting schedule will happen. We're proposing to plant 24 new trees along the southern edge of the Poe Pardi Field.
Now on slide 42.
This slide indicates the species mix. All of the species are natives. There's a mix of not only shrubs, but also understory trees and canopy trees. So in a sense, we have that layered characteristic of of woodlands. Some of the more majestic trees like beech and oak are along Makosh. We use smaller trees like Hawthorn and Amalankia, red bud in the smaller spaces. There's a line of honey locust on the western flank and a number of of mixed native species, including holly and pine in the southeast corner of the site. So it's a diverse mix of mostly native species, both shrub, understory and canopy, deciduous and evergreen.
Now on slide 43.
And this is just an illustrative catalog of this primary species mix that we are proposing.
And slide 44.
And of course, the ground cover, we're looking to have a seasonally dynamic ground cover. We're using a lot of things that have an evergreen presence, but also a lot of bulbs and ferns and other grasses that will give a very strong seasonal expression, especially in the spring around graduation time and in the fall.
Slide 45. Thank you, James. We're now going to shift to Mark Gabriel, who will talk about stormwater and he'll have to be sworn in.
Are you here?
I'm right here.
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth?
I do.
So just one confirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Mark Gabriel, G A B R I E L.
Thank you.
Yes, Mark, would you provide your credentials to the board, please?
Sure. My name is Mark Gabriel. I've graduated from Northeastern University with a bachelor's of science and civil engineering. Been an engineer for 16 years now, and I am a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
And do you have particular experience with stormwater management?
I do, yes. Many of my years as a civil engineer has been with stormwater management.
We submit Mark Gabriel as an expert in engineering and stormwater management.
We accept his qualifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, so this is the this slide here is a proposed grading. But to just take a step back, I know we've gone through many slides here showing the existing site. As you saw before, it's generally from a stormwater standpoint, it's generally lawns, walkways, the driveway loading area, the building. Stormwater runoff from the site today generally sheets from the northerly side of the building, north side of the building to the south side of the building via overland flow. It's captured in different inlets in the driveway area inlets. And it's conveyed either via a pipe system to Elm Drive or it sheets over to a pipe system east of Brown Hall. There are no known water quality best management practices or structures on the site today. The onsite soil analysis that was conducted for this geotechnical borings and test pits indicated a predominant presence of a D type soils throughout the site. The grading plan here, getting back to this, depicts both the proposed grades and is generally consistent with the existing site grades as well with the higher portions of the site existing along the north face of the building. Sloping gently around the building towards the south and southwest portions of the site. So that was slide 45 here. If we can move to 46. Slide 46 is in regards to the stormwater management and the proposed condition. So with the proposed building here, excuse me, the paved driveways, walkways and associated utilities with the building. The stormwater design is a it's a there's part nonstructural and structural stormwater management strategies, including BMPs with a focus on low impact development and some green infrastructure techniques that will be used to mitigate changes in the runoff, promote recharge where feasible, knowing that we are in a D soil conditions, and provide water quality treatment as well. This design prevents the generation of stormwater and nonpoint source pollution by protecting the existing wooded areas that we talked east of the facility and the trees that are all around the facility, disconnecting flow pass and promoting recharge of stormwater at its source while protecting the natural processes. Stormwater managers for the site include a bio retention area to the south of the building in the green down there near just west of the loading dock that was pointed earlier, as well as a water quality treatment device in the driveway and two subsurface facilities that all both treat and mitigate stormwater runoff. Each of these systems are open bottom systems. They are used to promote recharge as well as, as I mentioned, treatment and provide that stormwater mitigation. During the last few weeks, we've had some a few peer review comments come in in regards to some stormwater comments relative to the design of the stormwater and the water quality design storms. And we've responded to those comments with an updated stormwater management report to just provide some additional information in regards to those comments. We also did review some comments that received from PEC on the use of green infrastructure in porous pavers as well as rainwater harvesting. And we want to stress with the stormwater management strategies, they do include best management practices and they do focus on a low impact development with the green infrastructure techniques that will be used to mitigate these changes and runoff, promote recharge where feasible in these types of soils and provide the water quality treatment. Additionally, you know, wild permeable pavers and porous asphalt were considered for the project. It was decided that green infrastructure at the southwest side of the facility and the protection of the adjacent wooded area and trees on all four sides of the facility were were better suited to meet the project needs and the regulatory requirements. As an alternate to the permeable pavers and porous asphalt, the project will instead treat and manage stormwater using bio retention and promote infiltration through open bottom systems, which are comparable to those other technologies. Additionally, rainwater harvesting was also considered for the project. And while we do recognize the benefits of the rainwater collection and appreciate them, they were not pursued for this project. Instead, the project will conserve the water through adaptive vegetation that does not require irrigation after installation. If we want to move on to slide 47.
Did we skip one?
Nope, that was it. Thank you, Ron.
So slide 47 is a transition slide. We're going to talk about the exterior character and material. And now we're on slide 48. I'm going to walk through a series of renderings that now give the the sort of describe the character of the building. We're looking at a rendering here that is looking from Makosh Walk Cannon Green is on our right. Wig is in the foreground here and we're looking at Markland Library here and the pavilion that sits in the northwest corner of the new museum right here. I'm going to talk a lot about through several of these renderings, the material richness of the building. And also remind us again how the building is lifted off the ground to create porosity, opening, welcoming and transparency at the ground level. In terms of materials of the building, you'll see here a a sort of serrated edge of a of a precast that has a texture that reveals the sort of small scale white aggregate. And then I'll show you later studies that we're doing for these these tips of those serrated ends that are polished, that expose large pieces of stone that give the the building a kind of a great amount of interest. You'll also see here a kind of a bronze metal colored panel system that surrounds and is used on many of the the lens moments of the building. And as we go through, I'll also try to point out some of the building signage, since we're going to talk about the variance for signage. So this is the the primary entrance facing toward the to the north toward town. And this is a sort of one of the the primary entry signs on the camp on the building. You'll also slightly see here in the foreground a banner. There's a pylon that is perpendicular to Makosh Walk so that it can be seen moving east to west. And that would be a sort of site that would host large scale banners that would announce that there are different exhibitions that are happening in the museum. So similar to the banners that happened on Nassau Street, but a larger scale and helping to announce the arrival of the of the art museum. We've now swung around a little bit and slide 49, slide 49, and we're looking right on axis. This is the walkway that currently goes into the breezeway that connects Mark One Library to the existing art and archaeology department. And this is now the continuation of that walkway, as we've talked about through the presentation, as a campus walk that goes right through the heart of the building and exposes you to the museum as you're on a kind of daily journey passing through the museum. You'll see the pylon with the banner on the left here. You see the honorific sign announcing the museum here. And you get a close up of the sort of material richness of the polished edges of stone and the precast and the bronze colored bronze metal panels around the around this bay window. Swinging around to the right side of the building, to the west side of the building, there's a little key plan here on the lower left also. And we're on slide 50. Now we're looking with the Starn sculpture in in the foreground, the sort of trees that James Corner described. And then the western terraces. This is where you get a sense of the porosity and opening of the building at the ground level with views in and out. Again, the gallery pavilions lifted above that ground level. We're looking at the middle of the building here at a lens moment that connects the these two pavilions. And on the third level is the western facing terrace of the cafe at that level. We're also right along the diagonal walk, which is extending, you know, through the campus off on the right hand side of the slide here, going under this pavilion that you can you can get a glimpse of on the far right hand side of the of the image. Now, if we come now to the southern part of the site, I'm sorry, oops. Southern part of the site, we're looking back to the north, we're looking really along the walkway that is on axis with the Nassau Hall and the Kupla. We're on the east side of Dodd. The diagonal is coming under this pavilion, which sits in the southwest corner. Again, you can see the kind of texture scale and the richness and materials of the pavilions, which are lifted off the ground and the transparency and again, the bronze colored framing of those windows, bronze handrails on the on the terraces and steps. You'll see benches here that provide opportunities for gathering and sitting throughout this kind of western terraces. There's a and there's another sign on the other side of this wall here that I'll talk to talk about when we get to the description of the of the building signage. The loading dock is along this road walk, this roadway that brings you into the south side of the of the building into the the loading dock, which is located there. And getting back to the point that we made earlier, this is really a place for people. It's an improvement over what is there now. And the redesign of the loading configuration properly accommodates the needs of servicing and also gets them out of the pathways as much as possible from the pedestrian oriented campus that we're trying to create. You'll also see the sort of richness of landscape and trees in this corner of of the site. Slide 52. Now we've stepped a little bit in toward another set of entrances and the porosity that sits at this ground level. You get a better sense of the polished edges and some of the large aggregate of stone that we're continuing to study, a better sense of the bronze bronze colored metal paneling, the shadow and details of the of the richness of the of the of the concrete. And then another entrance here from this this terrace under underneath the pavilion in the middle of the campus. And you'll see the diagonal walk continuing off to the left past the Starn sculpture. Now we're on the northeast corner of the building, looking back toward the southwest page, slide 53. We're near the entrance to Prospect House and Prospect Gardens. You're getting a glimpse of a sculpture terrace that sits on this eastern side of the building and a bay window that is located at the corner of this of this pavilion. So you're looking down Makosh Walk and you're again seeing the kind of landscape surrounding the building. And one of these moments to sit and rest and get views in and out of of the museum. Now on slide 54, I'm going to talk a little about the site lighting. This is again was a topic of the of the sprab conversation. This is building and site lighting that I just wanted to explain that there's there are three different types of lights, lights that provide lighting for the the site. These round blue dots that you'll see, these are, these are downlights that are underneath the gallery pavilions that are elevated. And so the solid blue lines are either built into benches or steps that provide a kind of low light that shines down on the pavement right around those benches and steps. And then these orange lines illustrate lighting that is raking along the edge of a of a wall. But the shielding of the lamp is provided by the slight overhang of the gallery pavilion that sits above it. So there's a full cutoff for these uplights. That was a concern that was discussed in sprab, making sure that we were trying to adhere to principles of of dark sky design. So the shielding and the cutoff provided by the overhang achieves that. So now on slide 55, it's a little a lot of detail, but I just wanted to identify the different places that we have exterior building signage. Starting here at the at the north entrance off of Makosh. This indicates and tied to this rendering right here, this is that primary building signer, so I talked about in one of the renderings. Adjacent to it is one of those banner signs that is, as I said, seen perpendicular to Makosh Walk. Adjacent to it is one of those banner signs that is, as I said, seen perpendicular to Makosh Walk. If we go around clockwise, there's a similar pylon that announces the Mark One Library and the Department of Art and Archaeology. A smaller scale lettering at five and three eighths of an inch. As you get deeper into that courtyard that brings you into the department and to the library, there's an additional sign that provides identity for the department and the library. Continuing around the eastern side of the building. The photograph here shows the entrance from Prospect House and Sherred Green as you come down this set of steps. And then again, there's another sign over the entrance there, this would be the entrance to the education wing. And it also announces the the art museum. Coming further around the building to the southwest corner, another building ID on a concrete panel here, the signage faces to the east and announces the entrance to the building, which is on that north south walkway. And then continuing around the west, another entrance moment here that's both accessible and was the set of stairs. You'll see the rendering here announcing the art museum from the west and another banner moment right here announcing the exhibitions. So it's it's inevitable that when you create a building that has all side, all fronts and no backs and wants to be porous and has these major walkways in and out through the building and wants to be welcoming, inviting and and visible for the community. It's inevitable that you have to also provide the signage for all the for those, all those entrances. And so that leads to to the variance request.
And Ron, in addition to the many entrances, there are also several very separate and distinct uses.
Yes, they, yeah, you've got, you've got the library, you've got the apartment, you've got the museum. Yes.
So so a lot of these signs promote wayfinding, not not just advertising.
Yeah, wayfinding for sure. Our campus is often accused of being a little bit too mysterious and we're trying to break that habit, but in a tasteful way.
And and this is on the interior of the campus. It's not really visible.
Correct. And these are, these are, other than the banner signs which are are printed. These are all signs that are traditional etched and paint filled into the into the material of the of the of the building. So they're part of that tradition of etching into the into the fabric of this of the stone.
Good.
All right, James, I'm going to let you pick up here on fifty six.
So with slide fifty six, we finally go indoors. And I want to emphasize here a point that Ron made early in the presentation. And that is really the degree to which this entire project has been simultaneously designed from the inside out, which is to say in in terms of mission and operations and from the outside in and therefore to really emphasize the way in which form and function intertwine. Some of this is, as Ron has been emphasizing, a reflection of our mission, which is to be accessible. And it is a commitment to transparency and welcome. It is also critical, I want to note here, operationally to create a building that is zoneable. In other words, that can be operated variously in order to assure, for example, that there's a very significant level of public access to extended hours of the day without necessarily creating the operational burden of an all or nothing situation where we might have to have a full retinue of security officers in the galleries to those same extended hours. And and I'll try to touch on a couple of moments where that zoning within the building is possible. We've entered the building via the main entrance from the north and turned to the west to find what we're calling the Welcome Gallery, which is located on the ground level of the building. It has glass on three sides. It's a little bit of a prow of the ship intended to announce to pedestrian passersby the function of the museum from within. Just as Ron has been emphasizing the value of the viewscape from the inside out onto the campus, I think that operates in both directions so that much of the museum's functions and vitality are legible even from the outside in ways that hopefully lure the visitor within. What you see here is not certainly a curated exhibition. All of these slides are really best understood as architectural renderings. But what you can get a sense of i- is the material richness of the of the gallery spaces. This gallery will have a terrazzo floor consistent with being on the ground level of the building. Let's go to the next. Here on slide fifty seven, we've walked into the north south art walk. We're kind of standing at the point of intersection of the two art walks that function as these kind of interior museum streets. And this is therefore the critical point of intersection within the building. The north south art walk will have a number of embedded works of art in it so that the visitor is constantly put into contact with the museum as a collecting and exhibiting institution. This is, for example, an ancient Roman mosaic that we're planning to embed in the floor so that the visitor could actually safely walk above it and have a sense of it. To the very far left at that point of intersection is the location of the future museum store, which will be significantly enriched from what our retail presence has been in the past. And then straight ahead of us is a view into the the grand hall, which is in many ways kind of operationally the hub of the hub, the hub of this building. So let's go to the, well, actually, can we go back for a second? I also want to point out that in that this whole idea of porosity exists within the building as well. So that even when you're standing or moving through this interior walkway, you have views up into the heart of the gallery experience in ways that would hopefully lure someone to come back, even if if one is visiting the building when the gallery zone might not be open to the public. The grand hall, then, slide fifty eight. As they say, is a is the hub of the building. It's a mixed use space intended to support large scale lectures. There's a, there will be a series of retractable auditorium style seating that I'll pull out from the wall that you see on the left here. It will also function for performances, allowing us to do more multi arts programming in the building as well as for social experiences and events. You see through the windows to the end of a view toward the west, we're looking essentially toward a Dodd Hall. And above you get glimpses into the galleries on the second level, including moments of what we're calling visible storage. Elements in the building where objects will be installed very densely, particularly for students and more academic purposes. But as the eye continues to move up through the space, you see that this is the only triple height space in the building where it actually opens to skylights that are open to the sky above but are controllable so that for lectures and other purposes, the room can become a black box space when we need it to. Let's go to the next. Further into the education center on slide fifty nine. There are no fewer than ten educational spaces that radiate out of this education center, including a half dozen classrooms intended for object study, a couple of seminar rooms, a more modestly scaled auditorium space. There's daylighting comes into this space through a kind of very elegant bronze framed light well to the left. This space we're kind of standing in as we look at this as a kind of student lounge off of which many of these educational spaces radiate and ahead of you more of that visible storage. What looks like wood is actually something you're seeing through double sided glass storage into a suite of a wood clad object study classroom. So this is again very much the heart of the academic enterprise of the museum. But when I say academic, I do mean both for the university community and the wider community. Within this zone are a couple of what we're calling creativity labs, which are kind of maker spaces intended for very age diverse users, including many of our K to twelve visitors. On slide sixty, we prepare to go upstairs to discover the the bulk of the gallery spaces in the building. We're standing in the the entrance hall and grand stair. This is the area that moves people up to the second level. You'll see therefore that it's volumetrically very ample, very dramatic. You get a glimpse here of the signature element of the the roofing system and ceiling system, which is a glue lamb system that brings wood timbers into the space. It has a variety of benefits, including, I think, being incredibly architecturally arresting. This is does function as an event space, a social space and a display space. Almost certainly it will be more amply curated than a single sculpture sitting on the middle of the floor here. Let's go up. On slide sixty one, you see a rendering of one of the pavilion spaces. It's important to understand that these are really enormous gallery spaces. The pavilion galleries are themselves over four thousand square feet each. In all likelihood, therefore, rarely would you actually see the entire footprint of such a gallery open as you see it here. A number of non structural walls would typically be inserted to allow us to again amplify the display experience. We are operating on a model in which chronology and cultural specificity will kind of ground and anchor each of the pavilions, but with more integration across and between cultures in order, as I put it earlier, to to tell new kinds of narratives through the history of art that are more germane to the twenty first century. The galleries will have a white oak hardwood flooring. In a sense, kind of reflecting or mirroring the the wood of the of the roofing ceiling system. Four of the pavilions are to have daylight that will enter through a solo tube system that again is controllable so that when we need less daylight for the preservation of art, we can achieve that. But also to allow many of the collections to be seen under the kind of natural light conditions for which they were originally created. Let's go to the next. On slide sixty two, we see a more intimately scaled gallery. This is the the previous galleries, as Ron mentioned earlier, in the pavilions have ceiling heights of about eighteen feet to the bottom of the to the of the ceiling system. Here it's more like twelve and a half feet. This is important for a variety of reasons. One, to really best create frameworks for the incredible variety of objects within our care. In a case like this, you see it essentially visually curated with objects from the ancient Americas, many of which are intimately scaled objects. But also to provide provide for a really important spatial variation for the visitor. It's long been established that a movement from, again, volumetrically more significant spaces to more intimate spaces is really useful in overcoming museum fatigue, which is something that we have to think about in creating a much larger space for for visitor experience. Let's go to the next. One of the things we've also been very mindful of is the fact that that one of the things I think many of us love about the museum that we're that we've occupied until now is its intimacy. And we want to make to make sure that 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 idea of intimacy is retained even in a larger facility. Those more intimately scaled galleries that I was just referencing will be one such strategy. Another is the creation of three different, what I'm thinking of is viewing rooms. Small scaled spaces that are occupied primarily with this custom furniture designed by our architectural team, framing extraordinary views out onto the landscape. So these might be understood as meditation rooms, reading rooms, probably not densely occupied with works of art in order to create an an opportunity to kind of break up one's experience and also be very much reminded that one is at the heart of the Princeton campus. One of my critiques of many other museums is that you could be in a museum in Berlin or a museum in Hong Kong and they're largely interchangeable. And I simply don't want that to be the case. I want people very much, as they visit our museum, to know where they are in the world and feel grounded in a certain set of way. And I think these viewing rooms will help do that. Let's go to the next. Slide sixty four. Obviously, it is a complex floor plan for gallery spaces. Ron showed you a floor plan earlier that showed essentially the entirety of the second floor is occupied by gallery space. And we want to make sure that even the connective transitional spaces are beautiful. So we have a view here where you're actually getting a glimpse down into the north south art walk and across this kind of double height space. Again, in ways that hopefully lure and tantalize and create moments of connection between various areas of the collection. Head on in front of you is one of the various lens moments. You can actually see two of them in this particular view. That the one straight on on axis happens to be the lens that looks right onto the archway in Brown Hall. So again, very intentional in creating the these kind of grounding moments so you also maybe can orient yourself wherever you are in the building. It does bring in significant daylighting and we have a whole variety of strategies to make sure that that can be done without diminishing the safety of the collections or our ability to really use these galleries purposefully. Next, on slide sixty five, we finally make our way to the third floor and find the future museum cafe. The the idea behind this cafe is that it would be a kind of light meal service that that hopefully will offer three meals a day, at least on the days of the week when the art museum galleries are likely to be kept open into the evening. I very much wanted a space that would be equally enticing to a university undergraduate or a member of the community or a visitor from some distance. The interior of this space is intended to seat about sixty five, I think, and about the same occupancy on an outdoor cafe terrace visible through the windows here to the left. What you see at the very end wall is a suggestion of a work of public art, probably to be made in tile. So that again, even in the cafe space, you are constantly kind of put into contact with the fact you're not simply in any cafe, you're in in the the heart of a museum experience.
And James, this cafe is intended to not have cooking kitchens, right? This is food will be.
That is correct. There will be a food assembly, a location and a warming capacity. But this will be operated by restaurant associates. So we believe that most of the pre prep will happen at Prospect House next door. I will say that the idea here is that again, there can be community benefit from such a space. We don't necessarily plan to operate the museum galleries late into the evening, seven nights a week. So therefore, on the nights of the week that the galleries are not open, the cafe might well be then available as a private dining space and and available for, again, more intimately scaled events.
Okay, we're almost finished here. We're on slide sixty six and just to to present a kind of palette of building materials. We've pointed out most of these materials throughout the presentation. You see interior terrazos on the left, exterior concrete pavers on the lower left, some of the metal finishes that we've talked about on the lens moments. The glass systems and including and the glazing on the building is triple glazing. The middle shows the wood flooring of the galleries. And on the right are some, some of the glue lamb wood as part of the the strong architectural structural structural ceilings that that James has has talked about. We're refining some of these, but this gives you the general sense of those materials. I talked earlier about and often about the architecture expression of the of the precast concrete with the sort of white aggregate texture in the body and these large scale polished edges that animate the facade as well as the kind of sculptural overall form of the serrated edges. This gives you a sense of some of the choices that we're finalizing right now as we make our way through the last bits of mockups for the building. And then want to touch a little bit about the sustainability strategies. Not noted here is the fact that this this will be one of our first buildings to be heated and cooled through the hot water and chilled water of the geo exchange systems. But and and broken down into the the buckets, everything from greenhouse gas, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, reducing water usage, increasing the campus area under stormwater management, healthy materials, alternatives to single electricity vehicles and reducing waste. So we don't have time to go through this whole list, but we're happy to do it in Q and A. And then this is a section through the museum, similar to one we looked at earlier, looking to the west and just illustrating how those different sustainability strategies would be deployed or found in the building. Everything from a high performance exterior envelope, high performance mechanical and electrical systems, F S C certified wood in the flooring and in the glue lamps, natural daylight throughout the building and the heavy timber carbon offset. With that, I think we're going to end and then I will stop sharing and we'll enter into discussion.
Thank you very much. Right. Is there anyone on the board here who has questions right at the beginning? Or would you like to hear what the members of the public have to say about this? Anyone?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Joe.
I did have a question for Mr. Corner.
I did have a question for Mr. Coroner. On the slide that showed tree removal, some of the trees were marked with yellow, and he said those were to be roofed by others. Could he explain what that means?
That has to do with some of the utility work that we're doing on campus, which is separate from this project, but would does involve removing some of the trees on this site and other parts of the campus. But, and that utility work is being coordinated through our civil engineering department with the town arborist.
I see. Oh, thank you.
So I guess I'll continue from what I was going to say. So I, just to be clear, there won't be any natural gas heating. This is going to be entirely heated and cooled by the geo exchange plant.
That's right. That's right.
That's good. And I was just curious, in terms of, I guess, the recommendations regarding passive house. It seems like there are elements of, you know, good insulation and, you know, windows. The triple pane, or I don't know if you guys are using triple pane, but-
We are.
Okay, so, but I guess it probably, it's not going as far as the passive house standard.
It's not, no.
Okay. And, but it is, is it, it is, from what I understand, going to be lead gold?
That's correct.
Okay. That's good to hear. Although I think that the P C did recommend that, you know, it maybe pushed for platinum. The other thing that I was gonna ask about is the opportunity to do, use a carbon capture concrete. You know, this, this is something that, you know, have brought, we've brought up in the past. And actually, after bringing it up at the P C with some of the members that write the memos, they, they made it seem like this isn't as far off as, I guess, some people think. And it's becoming kind of standard practice. And I was just wondering if, if that's something that, you know, was considered and if it could still be considered. Seems like you guys are planning on using a lot of concrete, so it just seems like it would make sense.
It's, I'd say it's between, it's not, it's not far off, but it's not standard practice. The challenge there, what I specifically mean is that it's not broadly adopted by the community, by the, by the concrete industry. Where we have been exploring it on our projects for casting place concrete. We rely on local mixing plants. And we have been trying to get the, one of the local suppliers to achieve the requirements of of the carbon cure. They have not yet been able to do that. They have not been able to achieve the strengths required on the casting place concrete. And for the precast, we are, because of the sort of material qualities that we want for this particular piece of architecture, there are very, very few suppliers who can do the kinds of, you know, mix of aggregates, the large-scale aggregates, the polished edges, and the kind of textures that we're trying to achieve. And, and that, so there's a very small pool of candidates for that, and they do not provide carbon cure. So the, as the industry matures, we expect it will, it will get there. And we're pushing, and we'd like to encourage the industry, but we have not been able to get it on this project.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for at least addressing it. And it's good to hear that you guys are thinking about it a lot. I guess the, the final thing I would mention, because I know other people will want to talk, is whether green roofs or solar was thought about in terms of the roofs.
The green, the green roofs are, well, while green roofs have been done on some museums, our assessment of the risk is that we do not want to have a green roof on this museum. We will have other projects with opportunities for green roofs, and you'll see those, some of our other applications come through. And similarly, on, on solar, we are currently increasing the solar capacity of the campus from around 4.5 megawatts to nearly 12 megawatts, a 266% increase in photovoltaic power on campus through arrays in our land in West Windsor and also on the, on the, on the main campus. But we do it where it can be done in large contiguous cost-effective solar arrays. And the roof, the roof of this building, James mentioned the number of galleries that have solar tube, natural daylighting, those plus the courtyards plus other things make it a kind of patchwork of photovoltaics. And so we've decided not to, it doesn't make sense to do it here. It's much better to do it where it can be more cost-effective and where we can get better utilization out of opportunities for P V. But our overall campus strategy is, is a significant increase in P V. And I think we always, when we look at building systems and, you know, the geo exchange system and solar systems, we think campus-wide and as well as stormwater, we think both local and campus-wide.
Great, thanks. Thanks for addressing that. And I believe the engineer addressed some of the concerns about stormwater. Thanks.
Any, anyone else? Questions?
Mr. Cohen had a question.
Mr. Cohen? I, thank you. I just have two. One is really a minor detail, but in the truck turning diagram, it looked like some of the trucks were going over grassed areas. And I wonder if you can talk about that, whether it's misreading the diagram or if that's-
That is a, that is a reinforced turf area. So we do have a kind of strengthened edge there that allows the truck traffic to go over that.
Okay. And the other question is a much more general one, but the strategy of the pavilions, you know, breaking down the mass of the building somewhat to respond to the scale of adjacent buildings is a great one, I think. The question I have is if you could talk a little bit about why the same material is used on the recessed walls between the pavilions as is on the pavilions themselves, because it, just at first blush, it seems to me like that goes against, it works counter to the way you're trying to break down the mass. So you could talk a little bit about that material choice on the interstitial walls.
Right, right, right. My sense is that the, we have actually quite a lot of different materials. Whereas the pavilions are all consistently that serrated concrete with the polished edges. The spaces between the pavilions are the lens moments, and those often have large expanses of glass. That's where we have the bronze-colored metal panels and the, you know, the windows in and out. There may be some concrete in those lens moments, but it's, it's a very different kind of concrete. So the lens moments, I'd say we agree with you that that variety is good between the pavilions and the interstitial spaces between the pavilions. And that's where we, we transition to a different kind of material warmth through, through the bronze color. So if it, you know, we could, we could go lens by lens. But I do think that in general, we're trying to do exactly what you're encouraging us to do.
Okay, it seemed as you were walking around the building with the perspectives that there still seemed to be quite a bit of the concrete on those walls as well. I recognize there are perforations, there are openings in the, but there seems to be a lot of concrete still.
Yeah, there are bands of concrete, you know, let me, if, just to be thorough here, let me, let me pull up a good example.
I think slide 51 is a good example of what you're talking about.
Actually, I prefer 50. So hold on one second. One second, let me get back.
Yeah?
Hold on. That's 51, but I think this, this might be, we can look at both.
That's the one I was talking about.
So you get to kind of, you know, as we've pointed out, the one vocabulary on the pavilion. It's true that there's a kind of, a kind of balustrade of that vocabulary that comes across here. But the, the continuous glazing here and then that bronze-colored metal panel. So I suppose it's a little bit of both, but I think that our, our intent, and I think my reading of this is that this stands in contrast overall. All it may have pieces of that vocabulary, it stands in contrast to the vocabulary of the pavilions. And it certainly adds more scale, brings people to the edges, gives it, you know, views in and out, which is some of the intent.
That's all the questions I had for now.
Anyone else on the board have questions? Or shall we, let's-
I have a few, but I'm gonna wait until after public comment.
Right. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had a few questions.
You want to go ahead with it?
Thank you. I guess this is for Ron or whoever wants to answer it. The, you were talking about bus and group access to the museum, and I believe you said that school buses would be dropping off kids by Robertson Hall, and they'd have to cross Washington Road. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
And so what would you estimate that walk is about in terms of length of time for children?
Three minutes.
It's three minutes?
From, from, from Washington, so maybe four minutes from Washington?
And, and you noted different, you saw, you showed us a chart where there was a, you know, I guess it was the locations of Tiger Transit transit stops. About how far are they from the museum site?
They are also three minutes.
But that wouldn't include also the, I know you mentioned parking is existing parking facilities. You mentioned by Thomas Suite to the east, but then you mentioned the parking lot down south of the dinky and the west garage. That would be considerably longer, right?
Right. On foot, yeah, that's probably a seven to 10-minute walk, but we also have Tiger Transit service from there.
How about buses with senior citizens, older patrons? How would they, the closest they could get to the museum is Robertson Hall? Is there any other way? How would they access the museum?
Let me ask, you're now into the area of specialization. So I'm going to invite Charlie Tennyson to be sworn in and speak on behalf of our Transportation and Parking Services Group.
Happy to do that, Ron. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Wait, you have to be sworn in.
If you could raise your hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I swear, yeah.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Charlie Tennyson, and the last name is spelled T E N N Y S O N. I am the interim director for Transportation and Parking Services at Princeton and have served as the deputy director for operations at T P S for almost five years.
Thanks. So you heard the question, Charlie. How, how do we address like a busload of senior citizens or someone with special needs, things of that sort?
Yes, thanks, Richard. Happy to comment on that. So for quite a long time now, we've worked in really close partnership with James and the art museum staff. So we routinely welcome groups exactly of the nature you're describing to the museum. What we do is arrange quickly smaller shuttle vehicles to access campus via Elm Drive. So we greet them at a place much closer to the museum where they're able to exit the vehicle safely, especially the elderly and those with difficulty walking. So we typically pre-arrange all of those visits so that we're greeting them and welcoming them up campus for that more proximal drop-off and pickup to the museum.
And Charlie, because this is in the same location as the existing museum, we're already doing that, right? For the exist-
That's correct, yeah. So in fact, one of my colleagues, we have a position dedicated for just this very type of thing, for shuttle and parking access for events. And, and my colleague works very closely with, with his counterparts at the art museum to arrange all of these visits. And there are some recurring visitors that we know very well and look forward to welcoming back to campus when the museum's open. So a bus, a bus group that, like we're talking about, would come up Elm Drive and then walk over from Elm Drive, I'm assuming not through the service drive that's south of Dodd Hall, but it would be-
Michael, we've lost you there.
Yes. Sound went out. How would that work if the buses on Elm Drive, how would it get over to the art museum? They walk on the service drive or a Makosh walk?
I don't know if Ron, it would be helpful to look at it, to use a slide to indicate the space.
All right, give me a minute.
Ron, do you have the slide that shows the loading, the south side of the museum with the loading dock and the ADA spaces?
Yes, I do.
Because I have a question about that as well.
Okay, one second.
I don't know if, Michael, you wanted to start with the ADA spaces and the-
Yeah, let's, let's sets up. Thank you. The only parking spaces that I'm aware of onsite are these four handicap accessible spaces, and they're adjacent to the loading dock. Could you explain how they're not going to be in conflict with truck traffic? And how folks will find these spaces and then how they will get from these spaces into the museum? Like, could you just explain how this works?
Sure, and Ron, I'm happy to, you know, defer to you if you want to speak to the entryway into the museum from that area.
Well, the entryway from this area would be right through this southern entrance to this. There are a set of steps here to a door or a ramp, a disabled ramp here that brings you to the door that's more in the middle of the building. So that would, that would be the distance from this southern, southern southwest corner. But Charlie, I think what you might want to talk about is our campus policies to limit vehicles on campus. But how, and how these, how these are used for, you know, how a patron might use these versus how a patron might use a different kind of service that would get them to the building.
Sure, happy to comment on that. So yes, just as Ron mentioned, we have continued over the years and will continue to restrict this kind of common vehicle traffic and large vehicle traffic up and down Elm Drive just for the exact purpose of making these types of connections easier and safer for people to make who need closer parking for those with difficulty walking. So yeah, so people would be directed either by university museum, you know, website or guidance to access Elm Drive and locate this parking. We also have a booth that's staffed full-time by an attendant at the south end of Elm Drive, and that position kind of doubles as an information officer to direct people up the campus into this parking area. So they would provide kind of detailed instruction as the person arrives at the booth to access the parking. Sorry, were there any other questions to comment there, Michael? The other, yeah, and then the other one was about where does the bus drop people off on Elm Drive? And how close is that to the museum?
Yes, it's quite proximal, so yeah, maybe we can find-
Trying to get there.
Yeah, no problem, Ron. Sorry, I couldn't recall this.
So here, here's Elm Drive, here's Makosh, and here's the service drive.
Yes, so we can, and we certainly, depending on which point of entry the group needs to visit, we could use sort of either of those primary areas, right onto Makosh Walk there or further south.
Okay, thank you. And my last question at this point is about the, we talked a lot about, back in June of last year, when we were having the concept review, we talked a lot about the Ralph Adams cram section of the building that still exists. And this university's decision to not, to not incorporate it into the new museum. And we did talk a little bit about, you know, would it be, I guess the university said they would think about incorporating elements of that building if possible, put them on display in public areas. Has there been any thought to that? Where did that thinking end up?
We continued to look at that since that conversation, but we concluded that that we are not going to include any fragments of the Ralph Adams cram facade in the building.
All right, thank you.
All right, any, anyone else from the board or staff? At one point-
Get to the- Really quick. Well, how much do you expect the attendance to increase? Because I think there's, might be parking concerns as people scramble to find parking around town. You know, they're not necessarily going to end up in the university lots. So just want to get a feel for how much more traffic there'll be.
Could I respond maybe initially to that? So our projections anticipate first-year growth of about 50%, five zero, which would mean that we would have annualized attendance in the 300,000 zone. The reality is, we again have years of attendance data that- The reality is we again have years of attendance data that tells us that most, uh, the, the greatest volumes of our visitors come on the weekends. When the most university parking is available. And again, we have years of experience of discovering that a big part of what we have to do is provide appropriate information that guides visitors to where they're going to have a satisfying parking experience. So, you know, my view is that inevitably there will be a certain amount of downtown parking. And I tend to think that that's a good thing, that, that by virtue of someone parking in the heart of downtown, their, their likelihood of frequenting our local businesses is increased. Um, but, uh, a- again, the, the majority of our, of our peak attendance times and indeed our largest events are either evenings or weekends.
Thanks.
Okay. And I, I just had a, uh, kind of, uh, on that same subject, uh, what is going to happen with, uh, the ongoing exhibits while this construction is going on? You're not closing down totally, I would imagine. Is there any, uh, opportunity to use some of the, uh, stores, you know, empty, empty spaces in town?
That's, that's a great and, and intuitive question. Um, so yes, I, I regularly point out the museum isn't closed. The galleries are going to be closed. Um, we're going to try mightily to become a kind of museum without walls that does a lot of dispersed activity. So one answer is that as soon as public health issues allow, we're going to reopen Bainbridge House as a temporary exhibition space on the ground floor. Um, we are exploring the possibility made more likely because of sadly, the number of, of business closures downtown of taking on additional leased storefront space in order to, to expand our gallery activity. Public programming can obviously happen in a diverse array of spaces on campus. So we'll certainly be able to continue lectures and panel discussions and, and those kinds of things. And I'm very interested and eager to do a couple of things that would actually use the campus space itself as a kind of outdoor gallery environment for, for short-term, uh, exhibitions. So we're going to do our best to both to make sure that community engagement sustains itself and that the students who come to Princeton during the years of construction don't lose out entirely.
Anyone else? Otherwise I'll move to the, the public portion and. I don't know. Has someone been checking the, to see how many have lined up and so on?
There are 45, uh, members in attendance and we now have three hands up. Um, four hands, five hands. Okay, so the first person is Jill Barry, and I will be moving them over.
Okay, so you'll move Ms. Barry over first.
Hi, I'm Jill.
Yeah, hi. Um, we swear at all members of the public. So I'm going to swear you in. If you could raise your hand.
Okay.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn or affirm, please state your full name.
Jill Barry, B A R R Y. I'm the executive director of Morven Museum and Garden. And while I think this is a wonderful project for the university and the students, I think it's a wonderful thing for our community at, at large. Um, you know, to have a comprehensive art museum of this size and stature in our community is really invaluable for all of us. And I think, you know, the traffic it's going to drive to town, um, to smaller institutions like mine, um, and to area businesses and restaurants. Um, you know, I just think it's a really wonderful project and an asset for all of us. So I heartily endorse it and hope you do too.
Thank you. Right. And anyone else from, who's next on the list, Carrie?
Uh, that would be Allegra Daddamo.
Yes. Can you move her over?
Certainly.
Hey, I can, I'm now unmuted and let me just get my video working. Okay, hello.
If you can, hi, if, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Allegra Daddamo, and my last name is spelled D apostrophe capital A, D A M O.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello. Um, I'm the chair of the Princeton University Art Museum Dozen Association. And I came tonight to let you know how strongly I feel about this project and what a positive influence I think it will be on the community as well. Um, I think first of all, that the museum has a compelling and diverse collection of art. And our new building will enable visitors to see more of it. Um, I also think that having ready access for both ourselves and our children to this caliber of work is rare. And we don't have to leave our community to see it. Uh, second, I think that the muse, the new museum project provides a buffet of options. So you can explore the art in the museum, you can do scholarly study, you could drop in, you can take a highlights tour, a special tour. You can sign up for programming for a wide variety of age groups. Or you can sit in the cafe and chat with your friends or go out on the, on the deck and meditate. Or, I mean, there's so many options. You can even take an art walk through the museum space anytime, day or night, and be surrounded by art. So for me, the transparency of the design really removes the barrier between the art and the community and makes it very, very welcoming. I also think that with school budget constraints, many schools have cut back on field trip possibilities. So this new pro, uh, museum offers a cost-free option, as in the past, but now we can actually accommodate many classes in the museum at once instead of having to stagger them like we have in the past because of our space limitations. And then the last point I wanted to make is that, um, David Ajay's design is just, just so organic and harmonizes so well with the rest of the campus. But it also provides this eloquent flow of space between the inside and the outside of the museum. So it really makes the experience very seamless. So in my opinion, not only does the project really reflect the museum's, uh, goals as a teaching museum, but it also reflects its commitment to inclusiveness by inviting the community to participate. So I, um, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 44 members in attendance. We have seven hands raised. The next person will be Lori Raybon.
Okay.
And Carrie, who will come next after Ms. Raybon so that they?
Jay, Jay Chopra.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Or Lori, um, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or, and I think, I think you're on mute. If, if you could unmute yourself. We thank you.
Sorry about that.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Lori Raybon, R A B O N.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm the vice president of Palmer Square as well as the Nassau Inn. And I just would like to say a few words this evening on behalf of the Princeton University Art Museum. I think that we're all in agreement that the museum is a significant asset to the complement of the cultural and heritage tourism drivers to Princeton as well as Mercer County. The additional visitors to the town making one day or multi-day trips contributes to the economic vitality of the retailers as well as our restaurateurs. They also add to the number of visitors who then often go to other sites, as Jill Barry mentioned, one being Morven. Many of the group and leisure travelers to the Nassau Inn often, uh, often ask us for interesting, um, places that they might visit while they're in town. Things that they can do in a group setting or for a team venture. And at the top of our list is the art museum. They've been a highlight of the marketing initiatives for Princeton as a destination that drives local, regional and national attention. And we are fortunate to have them in our own backyard. I also want to personally, um, mention what James Stewart and the, um, team at the art museum did for all of us during COVID. When COVID struck, James reached out, met with the mayor, initiated the PMA, uh, weekly briefings that we were having, kept us all in touch. Um, and in addition to that came to, uh, those of us landlords who were not so fortunate and had vacant storefronts and offered the services of the art museum at their cost of time and as well as expense and created art for the streets. It's a beautiful installation. Um, we're very proud to have it on our Wholefish, uh, storefronts. And they've proven time and again to be invaluable partners to all of us in town. I hope that you considered this beautiful new museum and vote to, uh, allow them to be built, um, in the new space. And I just want to personally mention that the, the renderings are absolutely gorgeous. And you've transformed me this evening and taken me into the space. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have 43 members in attendance. We have Jay Chopra and Adam Welch as the next two. So I'm promoting Mr. Chopra. I'm not sure. I think maybe he removed himself. I'm not sure. Uh, I'm going to promote Adam Welch to a panelist.
And line the next person up then.
Uh, then there's Mark Taylor and Jessica Dory.
Yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Adam Welch, W E L C H.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, thank you very much, uh, board for, uh, allowing me to speak tonight. And, uh, thank you very much, um, the university for that presentation. Just absolutely fantastic. So I'm the executive director at the Arts Council Princeton, and I wholeheartedly support this project. Um, I am in agreement with both Lori and Jill, who, uh, suggests, um, how valuable this project is and a larger museum and what a resource it will be for my own business, um, in town. As we have many classes, many educational classes, and we use the museum regularly as a resource for inspiration for, as a muse for both our kids' classes and our adult classes. And as an artist myself, I utilize the museum for the same reasons. But more so, I think, um, I'm, I'm so thrilled that it's growing so that more of the permanent collection can be on display. But I'm more interested in the growth of its, uh, use for educational purposes. Um, I think that, uh, that's one area where a lot of museums really seem to be lacking. And, um, this, uh, current, uh, museum certainly doesn't have quite enough space, um, to promote a, a really, um, in-depth, um, sort of amateur and professional, uh, rigorous sort of critical engagement with the work. And I think that, um, the architect and James have, uh, really played into that and allowed, uh, for much more engagement on that level. And I think that, uh, over time, that's going to really, um, bear a lot of fruit. And I think that also one thing that's great about this, uh, design is it really allows, um, you know, you to engage the artwork in a really sophisticated way that I think that, um, you know, currently, uh, might be lacking a little bit in the, um, existing museum. And I'm really looking forward to engaging the work on that level. So, um, again, um, I wholeheartedly support this project and I thank the, uh, university, uh, for putting together that presentation. It was, um, really immersive. So, um, again, thank you very much for listening to me tonight and, uh, I'm in full support.
You. Any, all right, Carrie, who's the next person?
Uh, we have five people with their hands raised. The next two are Mark Taylor and Jessica Dory. So Mr. Taylor is being promoted.
All right. You're running sideways.
It's okay.
Am I still sideways?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's funny.
That's great. Thank you. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth?
I do so swear.
So sworn, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Mark Taylor, T A Y L O R.
Thank you.
So I'm a Princeton alumnus, class of 1988, and I, I dearly wish the university had solicited input from alumni before getting this far along with their plans. But they did not, so I'm grateful to all of you for this one opportunity to speak tonight. You all may have heard of James Howard Kuntzler. He's the author of The Geography of Nowhere: The Rise and Decline of America's Man-made Landscape. He decries the abandonment of human-scale, human-friendly architecture in the modern quest for novelty and dramatic statements. He writes an acclaimed monthly column called Architectural Eyesore of the Month and chose the new Princeton Art Museum design as his eyesore of the month for October. Like me, he objects to this disturbing brutalist behemoth plunked down in the middle of the loveliest part of the Princeton campus, describing it as, quote, boring, pointless and joyless, and asks, quote, "How many of these floating boxes are there in the world?" When Ralph Adams Cram, the father of American collegiate Gothic, designed the historic and beautiful McCormick Hall, which will be demolished to make way for this pile of concrete boxes, he agonized over the need to blend McCormick sensitively and harmoniously with the historic collegiate Gothic and Victorian structures surrounding it. Arguably, this congruity is one of the most important responsibilities of any architect, particularly when introducing a new building into an historic context. By contrast, David Ajay didn't even try. He pointedly said he, quote, "Wasn't trying to in any way mimic anything to do with what was immediately around," end quote. Indeed, this design, which dwarfs everything around it and resembles nothing so much as a collection of steel shipping containers, deliberately thumbs its nose at its elderly architectural neighbors. Much of what we heard tonight is simply a good reasoned argument for a spacious new Princeton art museum. And I do not object at all to that idea. I just object to putting it in this location where it will not only destroy the attractive McCormick Hall, but consume an appalling amount of green space, a resource which is a key part of the attractiveness of the old campus and critically scarce in this area. Once that green space is gone, it will never return. No amount of planting scattered around the base of those concrete walls can make up for that loss. The vast majority of the benefits of this building could be equally realized in another location. Given that the museum will attract 300,000 visitors annually from outside the campus, and that's just to start. Putting further pressure, pressure on traffic in the center of town, which we know is terrible already. Given robust transportation options like Tiger Transit now available to students and educators. And given the striking similarity to the other brutalist structures from the 1960s located further down Washington Road, it would be much more appropriate to locate the museum in that area or on the other side of Lake Carnegie, where it can still benefit the community of Princeton. One key advantage to some of those other sites is that the footprint of the building can continue to grow along with the inevitable growth in the size and prestige of the collection in the decades to come. In summary, I strongly encourage the planning board not to approve the eyesore of the month in the heart of the historic campus, but to instead ask the university to please consider a more appropriate site. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have 42 members in attendance. The next two are Jessica Dory and Kate Beck. And I'm moving Jessica Dory over.
Yes, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give? Yes, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Jessica Dury, D U R R I E.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for letting me speak tonight. And I'm a Princeton resident and also the co-owner of Small World Coffee downtown. And one of the reasons why I like the location of the current and new art museum is its walkability for students and residents. But tonight I wanted to also just show my support for the integrity of the new museum design and its inevitable positive impacts. Because I love this museum so much and its relationship to the local community, and also the leadership of the museum, James, and all of his staff, I agreed to be on the Advisory Council of the the Community Advisory Council of the museum. And as a resident of Princeton for twenty-eight years now, and a mother and a business owner, my love for the current and future museum is multifaceted. We are so fortunate to have a museum of this caliber out our back door. And James and his team have worked tirelessly to integrate the museum into the local community and beyond, making it inviting to so many. And that that feeling has really changed over time compared to when I first moved here. And the new building with its outward-looking design and the intentional and flexible space utilization, the increased focus on cultural inclusivity will only improve the accessibility and approachability that the museum has created over time. And then also as a business owner, I know the museum, as many others have mentioned, like Lori. The museum lures so many visitors to Princeton and amplifies our town as a destination, bringing much appreciated tourism to the downtown. Many times when I'm working on a busy Saturday, pre-COVID, of course, and chat with visiting customers, I ask them what brings them to town. And I can honestly say, visiting the art museum is one of the top answers. So there's no doubt that the museum has a positive cultural and economic impact in our town and our region. And being on the Advisory Council, I've had the special treat and pleasure of listening to and witnessing the intention and progress of this design, the use of the space, and its integration into the campus architecture, and the multitude of details that are going into this rare opportunity, all while being forward-thinking in its material choices and focusing on sustainable building practices. So the new museum will be able to expand and amplify its offerings to students and visitors and our community. And as James mentioned, there are so many events that happen there, not just for the students, but for everybody in town. We've been involved in the Nassau Street Sampler for at least nine years now, and it is such an amazing event with hundreds of people out the door, just going on and on and on. It's so much fun. And it actually makes my entire employee community feel like they're part of the art museum, which I think is really special. The new art museum will be an enriching and dominant focal point of our community and beyond. And as a business owner, I know it has and only will continue to have a strong and positive cultural and economic impact on our town and our region. So I really hope that we get to build this museum as quickly as possible because I already miss the old one. So thank you very much for listening.
Carrie?
Yes, we have forty-two members in attendance. We have three hands raised. The next person is Kate Beck, and then Mimi Omasinski.
Okay.
Kate, can you turn your video on, please?
Yeah, I'm working on that. My apologies. For some reason, suddenly my screen went wonky.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Please, please state your full name and spell your last name for the record.
Sure, my name is Kate Beck, and it's spelled B E C H, is in the house.
Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to be here tonight to express my enthusiasm for the spirit of what I believe is this elegant and very exciting vision, especially with its goals to expand reach to even more community residents and foster connection among diverse visitors and audiences. I am the CEO of the Princeton Family YMCA, which those values we hold dear. I also appreciate the commitment to removing barriers and promoting inclusion. I also, and I appreciate the intentionality to shape a museum experience that is welcoming and accessible to a wide range of people. Of course, like Jessica mentioned, I too serve with pleasure on the Community Leadership Council, where I've had the honor of learning quite a bit more about the museum and come to appreciate its vast collections. So I'm happy that the expanded footprint and thoughtful design and scale will give us an opportunity to enjoy the museum's collections that we frankly not been able to experience with the current limitations. I also feel very fortunate to reside in a community where, in our backyard, at no cost to us, I, along with the many YMCA members that I know who speak frequently of the wonderful treasure of the museum, are invited to share in world-class visual art experiences that have the power to educate and enrich and transform us. So I just wanted to share my support for what I believe is a really important project for our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie. Okay, Mimi Omasinski and Jay Chopra are the next two, and then we have a third after that. So I'm promoting Mimi Omasinski.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
So sworn. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
It's Mimi Omasinski, O M I E C I N S K I.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank y'all for the time tonight. I'm shocked at how much you guys work at all this stuff all the time. I'm not going to reiterate what I heard a lot tonight. But there's a couple of things that I just want to definitely add and kind of bring home a little. Lori Raybon mentioned that James has been very involved in the COVID Resiliency Recovery Plan with PMA. It is an understatement to say that, you know, he did a few things. He made businesses in Princeton absolutely survive part of this. He let us use the Zoom platform. When all of us were scrambling and weren't sure what to do, it was very important to do. Only bring it up because leadership matters in a situation like this. I've watched this art museum. I've lived here fifteen years. I've owned Princeton Tour Company now for fourteen years. There's some people on the panel, people like Tim, and even the esteemed Madame Gunning, who remember when I had four bikes and I started out doing bike tours. I know a lot about tourists coming to Princeton. And what I can tell you is that there's a lot of school groups that weren't able to take advantage of this world-class collection because they're just, what enough space, what enough time, couldn't service everybody. You, I love that you guys thought to think of the active seniors who were having a tough time getting to that front door. I've seen how the art museum has evolved to make sure that those people are going to be taken care of. When we talk about expanded space at the art museum, you guys know, we're talking about more people being able to come. But what I love is that they've even thought of more bikes. And when we get more bikes, that means now people can sculpt a bigger day in Princeton. It's now a bigger experience. I'm more likely to book a room at the New Graduate or at the Nassau Inn or the Peacock Inn. And now we're talking occupancy tax, hotel occupancy tax. This is money for the town. So, so I wanted to mention those few things. You know, things like expanding the impact for our other cultural destinations like Morven, like the Paul Robeson House, like the Arts Council, the Princeton Battlefield, all of those things benefit from a project like this. I'm, I'm, we don't give architectural tours because I'm not smart at that. But I will say that Sir David, I was a little surprised at the comment tonight about that design because everything I've read is completely different, that it's actually emblematic of the university's commitment to be more transparent, more porous itself, and and to increase the accessibility in terms of the student body. So I guess I'm just going to throw that out there because people who are smart at architecture might be able to connect those dots. Thank you for your time tonight, and and I really hope you vote yes to it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have two more members of the public who wish to speak, Jay Chopra and Ron Menapace. So I am promoting Jay Chopra.
Hello.
Raise your right hand.
This, okay.
Do you swear or affirm testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
I'm so sworn. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Full name is Jeannie Chopra. Last name is spelled C H O P as in Paul, R A.
Can you spell your first name, please?
Yes, it's J E A N N I E.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak about the support that I have for the museum, actually, my family has, and to also be able to speak as a community member. Sorry, I apologize about the glitch with raising the hand. I think I pressed something strange on my screen earlier. But first of all, I just really like a chance to say and to express what a positive impact having a new art museum building on Princeton University campus will be for the greater Princeton community. I think I'm in total agreement with a lot of what has been said tonight by many of the other participants who spoke up on behalf of the increase in bringing the economy back to the downtown area and also engaging more and more people in appreciating the museum. My husband, daughter, and I first discovered the Princeton University Art Museum shortly after we moved to New Jersey from California. And that was several years ago. And this discovery took place while we were visiting and walking through the campus, and we happened upon the building. So it was such a great surprise that we found the art museum. Since then, we've enjoyed viewing many extraordinary art exhibits and also participating in the community community events offered by the museum over the years. Some of these span the special family weekends, come university, and the Thursday late night evening art receptions. You know, we really feel that this museum has been such a welcoming place, and I use the word haven, because we discovered it at a time when we moved and left our entire family, both sides of our family in California, and didn't really know anyone in New Jersey, and happened to find a place that we could visit often and go and, you know, just take a break and just enjoy the art. So it has a special meaning for us. Having a brand-new building is definitely going to be an asset to the community. There's going to be, first of all, much more space to fully optimize and display art exhibits. And it's going to be a place not only for the Princeton University students, staff, and academic community, but also many more families living in the greater Princeton area, such as myself and my family, can come to visit, engage with, and appreciate the arts each in our own way. We feel that art really gives us a chance to learn about the past, consider the future, and reflect what is happening in our present time. Visiting the art museum gives us a chance to just take a pause out of our busy daily lives and just to escape for a little while. And that is just a great thing to have. Having a new, modern, fresh museum space will do wonders for the soul, to be able to just go inside, visit, absorb the physical architectural environment, and to see the exhibits in their new homes. It's going to be so exciting. So I just want to conclude, we're really looking forward to when the new museum building will be completed. And we're looking forward to that in the years to come. Thank you.
You.
Okay, so we have one person remaining, Mr. Menapace. I will bring him over now.
Okay.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn and affirmed. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Ron Menapace, and the last name is spelled M E N A P A C E.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep this brief. I'm the last person on a very long night, and I appreciate everybody for hanging in there. I am a resident of Princeton, as well as the owner of Homestead Princeton, which is at three hundred Rutherford Street, otherwise known as the Packet Building. And I just want to reiterate some of the things that Mimi and Lori and Jessica have talked about with the economic impacts of having the museum here, a world-class museum, really, in a small town. One of the reasons why we actually left downtown, if you didn't know, we used to be in Palmer Square, was because there was a decrease in foot traffic over the past few years. And when I hear James talk about a fifty percent increase in visitors and three hundred thousand visitors annually, it's a huge economic boon for local businesses. So just from that standpoint, I just wanted to reiterate some of those things, as well as a father of four children that are twelve and under. I can't underestimate the the benefit it's had on my children, as well as the children of the community and and the visitors from out of town. So on those merits alone, I just implore that the board is going to approve this as quickly as possible. Thank you.
You. All right, if that's all in that category, let's let's just go back and ask if there's anybody felt they suddenly thought of something and wanted to add. We have just a little bit of time. Anyone? Anyone from the public, Madam Chair?
Yes. See any, I don't see any members raising their hands.
Okay. So why don't we close the public portion then? And how about the people who spoke with the board and for the anybody?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I see Mr. Quinn and Mr. O'Donnell do as well, so I'll I'll let them go first.
Well. Louise, I think since you
Sorry, Wanda, you're the one to call on people, not me. But I can see everybody on my screen, and I know that sometimes you can't.
Louise, you you mentioned you had questions before the public, so please go first.
Um. Yeah, I first of all, this project is just um it's really amazing. It's 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 stunning. And if the interior looks the way the renderings do, you know, it really is just an absolute world-class facility, and it's really exciting. And I I the questions that I have are probably going to seem sort of picky. I just want to preface them by saying how impressive overall I think that it is, and I hope that the comment about eyesore of the month referred to the previous plan, which I think was a lot more brutalist than what we're seeing here, although I do understand the concerns about scale overall, because it is huge. But I wanted to ask a little bit about stormwater. And I guess specifically ask Mr. Gabriel or whoever is the appropriate person. I I I do note, and you did too, that there's a rain garden in your channeling some water to the forested area, but there's still a bunch of underground detention. And it is open bottom. But I'm wondering if you considered channeling some of that water to the trees that you're planting and, you know, using using more vegetation. That's seems like a pretty small rain garden nestled next to a very large structure.
Sure. I mean, I could speak on the stormwater and where Sure. I mean, I could speak on the stormwater and where, where it goes and, and the size of the rain garden, but I'm not sure if, Ron, we want to speak to the, the more of the landscaping and the areas to put stormwater?
Why don't you start, Mark?
Sure. Yeah, so the, you know, there, there are a, as you pointed out, two larger underground systems. We are dealing with a poorer type of soil on the site with the D-type soil. So we are needing to retain and detain some of that stormwater with this increase of roof area. As you saw on some of the slides, there's a lot of roof area and very, you know, with that roof area, we're not looking to put the landscaping beneath the roof, because then it just won't have that place to grow. In regards to, you know, channeling to other areas, we really were focusing on protecting the areas adjacent to the building, being the wooded garden adjacent to the Prospect House and the trees. Well, I say wooded garden, but the landscaping and the trees adjacent to Prospect House, as well as the trees on, on the other two sides of the facility to really protect them and keep them as part of the landscaping design on the project while maintaining the patio areas that are needed for the events.
So that routing water to them is inconsistent with protecting them? Or I'm, I'm asking that, that's not a sarcastic question.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. Nope. We, 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 we have to route water to the systems to capture and mitigate that increase in flow offsite. We can't just let it cheat off to some of those trees in those areas, although some water is going in that direction. We do have to capture, mitigate that for this project. So it does have to go to the ground underneath the, the patios.
So, so you never thought about tree trenches or, you know, turning those tree features into stormwater features? Basically integrating your landscaping with your stormwater. I, I'm just, you know, what we're trying to move it in, in the municipality more and more toward using natural systems to manage stormwater. And there's just a whole lot of underground detention, and I understand the soils are not great and all of that stuff. But I guess I'm just making the point because I keep seeing projects with great big underground systems and also trees planted. And it just looks like there could be a better connection maybe going forward. I know you're not going to redesign this. I'm just asking if you've even thought about that.
We had thought about more rain gardens on this project, but, you know, with the constraints of the site and needing the outdoor space for the art museum, it promoted more of a subsurface type system on this project. And, you know, these green facilities that you're speaking of, like rain gardens and the like, having those, we like to have those on, on as many projects as we can. As you've seen, Louise, on, on other projects that we brought before you, we have done that. But just on this project, we went more subsurface because of the need for the pavers, the patio areas, and still trying to trickle in a retention area on the south side of the building.
Okay. I have a question about the pathways. And so I don't know exactly who to pose this to, but are those walkways that basically go through the building, are they open 24/7? Are they full-time? Walkways?
They are not. They will be, I don't know if we've established the final hours of those. They will be, but they're not, they're not going to be 24/7. Most of our buildings have a proxy system, a card system, where people who have permissions in buildings are letting the buildings after hours. I think the intent here is to extend the, extend the hours for the visiting public as, as long as possible. But I don't, I think it might be 10 o'clock.
That's right. We're, we're thinking, Louise, something like 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The building would be completely accessible.
Okay. So there's just that one diagonal walk that goes under the building that's obviously never going to be closed off, I assume.
Correct. That's just a.
Ones that are perpendicular to each other.
Yeah, because those, those are literally inside the building. The one that's on the diagonal walk is a open passageway.
Okay. Quick question about acoustics inside. It looked like there were these vast spaces in, in certain areas. And again, amazing looking, I'm just wondering, are those, are there, are you using materials inside to help all four noise bouncing around? It didn't seem like in the materials there was like acoustical stuff.
Yes, we're very sensitive to that. James, do you want to talk a little about that?
I can. Indeed, yes. There are a combination of acoustic strategies, including materials like pyro, for example, that have acoustic absorptive character. There'll be elements in the ceilings of the larger pavilion galleries to help manage acoustics. And there will be an adaptable acoustic system in the grand hall, which is the largest of the spaces you saw, so that the acoustic framework adapts effectively from, I don't know, choral performance to a large social event. So we, we really have been attentive, I think, to that.
Right. And even the flooring, we had a conversation earlier this week, I think it was, about, about the foot, sound of footfall on the wooden floors. We have a system, an assembly that will minimize the noise from, from, you know, heels and shoes on the wooden floor.
I should have known. I should have known that you'd have been very attentive to all of that. Two more questions. I may have already said two more, but now it really is two more. The historic facade that is going away, the Ralph Adams cram facade, what is, what is going to happen to those elements? I mean, I, I totally understand. I mean, I guess I understand that you're, you're simply not going to use them, and we need to accept that. But is there, do, are those things just erased forever? Do they, is there never another place for those, for those features on campus or anywhere else? It just, it's, it's sad. It's sad to see that really beautiful historic facade just disappear forever.
I honestly don't, that's a construction logistic question. There are companies that salvage material like that, and I don't know if we've gotten into whether or not that's going to be part of our, part of our, our construction process. So I'm afraid I can't answer that. I'm going to see if someone on our team can send me a note that might help, help answer that.
Okay, and my final, final question is about timeframe. Do you, when do you expect if, you know, assuming approval is forthcoming quickly, when do you expect to get started? And when do you expect, how long do you expect the project to take?
Well, James would tell you he's already very started. A lot of embedded objects, the, the zax and the floors and things like that, and, and moving all the collections out of the museum. So James has been at this for, for quite a while. We have a kind of real active construction schedule anticipated. If we can be successful with these approvals in May of 2021, and we would be finished in August of 2024.
Thank you. If, if we can, if we can know at some point the answer to the question about the.
We, we can get back to on that one, yes.
That, that'd be great. Thank you.
You can see that the May start is very important in the schedule because we finish then in August. So when the students come back for that school year, they have the benefit of the open museum.
Okay, um, this is really a very important project for Princeton. I just want to make sure that I didn't sort of skip over someone who was sitting here wondering whether they should or should not say something about it. Otherwise, we finish at 11 o'clock, so we have not much time left. Anybody else?
And Tim, Mr. Quinn was going to say something.
Yeah, Tim?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's, it's been great to hear all the enthusiasm in the community about this project. I love the art museum. My child, who's now not a child anymore, 24, we spent many a great hour cultivating his curiosity and creativity in, in the art museum. I won't comment on the design. I'm like, like Mimi O. I'm, I'm not architecturally qualified. I will say though, that it, it, it did recall for me when I saw the, the 1965 facade of the old Princeton Public Library, which a few of us remember from back in the day. And I, I just wanted to echo Mr. Chow's comment about traffic and parking. I think this is great. I think an expanded art museum is wonderful. And I've been in Mercer County long enough to remember when the Johnson Atelier became the Johnson Sculpture Garden and became Grounds for Sculpture. And, and when there, when the, the number of visitors to Grounds for Sculpture quadrupled from when it was a working atelier, they were able to build more surface parking. That's not going to happen in Princeton. In fact, our governing body wisely, in a move I supported, has removed street parking from prime space downtown on Witherspoon Street. We're going to lose more of our parking inventory when the Griggs Corner lot becomes housing. So I, I think I'd be remiss in not saying that while more people are good and are going to be good for downtown and good for business, that I, I hope that someone has thought about what a Plan B is going to be, is going to look like if, as I suspect, this museum becomes as popular as Grounds for Sculpture became with, with out-of-town visitors. Again, it's all good. But I think simply saying that visitors are going to park in spots that are abandoned on the weekend by university, it, it seems to me that that's a best-case scenario. And I, I see that Georges Hakimard has turned his camera on. I, I'm guessing in anticipation and addressing my concerns. So that's it. Everything in Princeton is about parking in one way or another when it comes down to it. And kudos on the bike parking.
Okay, now, the, we're all so enthusiastic about public participation and what's been going on and so on. It's, it's easy to forget that this is an application which we have to come to a decision and vote. And that, that we do need to make a list of conditions or things we'd like to see worked on in the process of completing, the process of completing the application. So with that reminder, does anybody want, yes, Michael?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, in my introduction, I said I was going to comment on the project's relation to the campus plan. I just wanted to return to that point for a second because, as you know, when we look at university projects, we always hear from the university and we talk about, you know, is it in, is it consistent with the current 2026 campus plan? Certainly, this has been done in all the recent projects we've seen on the East Campus. There hasn't been much talk about it tonight because I know in my review of the current campus plan, there's really pretty silent on the art museum. I guess you could conclude from that, that, that meant the university was fine with the, with the art museum where it was. But there's no mention of it expanding or becoming larger or anything like that. So the, the campus plan is actually pretty silent on the art museum, and that's a shame. I, I guess I wish I had been here, here a few years ago when the campus plan was being written. So I would have liked to have been part of that conversation because, obviously, this new museum is going to be a wonderful asset for Princeton, both the community and the university. I just, I'm not convinced that, you know, the site is the premium site or the most effective site. Or I, I wish the design, you know, could, if in a different place, the design could have been different. This is a very large facility squeezed into a very tight part of the campus. But the campus plan doesn't say it shouldn't be here. The campus plan doesn't even talk about the art museum. One thing that campus plan does talk about is the importance of the diagonal walk and how it should be enhanced. And I think that's troubled me from the beginning because you may recall last year when we saw the initial designs, that, that at first, the, the building seemed to ignore the diagonal walk, and it had to bend around the southwest corner of the building. And then because the community pushed for better accommodation of the diagonal walk, the design has been revised to reflect that. So interestingly, the one element that the campus plan does talk about, the diagonal walk, seems to have been impacted by this, this design of the expanded art museum. But I just wanted to bring in the discussion and consideration of the campus plan because it's appropriate when we look at university projects. So thank you.
Say two things, Michael, that it was not, you're correct, it was not identified in the campus plan because it was assumed to be a renovation in addition to the existing building. And about the diagonal walk, you're absolutely incorrect. The diagonal walk was a motivating factor in the very first sketches of the design. And every time we've shown it, the diagonal walk has been embraced and enhanced by the building. So I think you just have a, you're misremembering that history.
We can agree to disagree, but thank you, Ron.
Right, just, time is really closing in now. Does anyone want to make a motion on this? And list.
Mr. Colin has his hand up, Madam Chair.
Sorry, David.
Okay, yeah, actually, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. I would like to, first of all, say that I do support the variances for the signage. Nobody has really spoken to that at all tonight. But I think the requirement for the additional signs based on the multiple entries and multiple uses in the building is well-supported, and I think they're very tasteful and worked, worked in well to the architecture of the building. So I want to support that. We did receive a memo from, from the university responding to various reports. I think Carrie just sent it out to us today or yesterday. And, and essentially, they agreed to all of the conditions that were in the professionals' reports, except, and then there were a few caveats. And so I think it would be good to base the conditions. And I, I would move to approve the application using that document as a basis for listing the conditions of approval. I personally haven't heard any discussion tonight that suggested additional conditions beyond what were in that memo. But other members of the board can correct me if I'm wrong about that.
Mia?
I'd like to second the motion exactly as stated by David.
Thank you. Do we, do we have the, the memo so we can have something to work off?
That'd be the response memorandum that the applicant provided?
Yes.
That was distributed to the board two days ago, and it's also available online on the website.
It's dated March 1, 2021. It has a Princeton University Art Museum sort of cover page. And then it just annotates responses. And I, I think as David said, basically, we, we are fine with the conditions except as annotated. And, and there's, frankly, there are no big issues. It's just clarifying or annotating a couple of responses. But we would agree with that approach that David has suggested.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
The only, the only, the only additional condition I would suggest is one we've traditionally done for the university with all the. The only additional condition I would suggest is one we've traditionally done for the university with all the applications coming in, that they've done the slide presentation and we have a provision that says that the elements of the presentation that go to the site plan and design have to be implemented. And so I think we should do that here. Now, I know there's at least one instance in which the university laid out the two options with respect to the serrated edges, so we understand that they would have the option there. But other than that, I'm certainly fine with that approach.
Right, and we have to, for example, Jerry, we have to supplement the plan with the bike racks to show the added bike racks.
Yeah, I have that down too.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course, that's, that's, that's an exhibit A1.
Right, it's part of the presentation, but yeah. I think we're good to go.
You agree, Jerry?
Yes.
Good to go. Yes, and somebody objecting over there? Anyone else?
Do you like me to do a roll call?
Well, we've, we had a second on that. Yes, why don't we have a roll call?
Thank you. Ms. Capizoli?
Can I just interrupt one thing? Rich, I think you forgot to mention, we would also like permission as part of the motion, if possible, to work with the engineer on any early start work that may be appropriate here.
As we've done with a couple of the other-
Yeah, we tend to do it. I apologize, I did forget that.
Thank you.
I got so excited that you were going to be voting that I-
Anyway. Where were you?
I'm excited too.
In addition to the sign variances and the conditions, obviously, it's the approval of the of the major site plan, preliminary and final major site plan approval as well.
Yeah, thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Okay.
We started roll-
Yes. Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Very excited. Yeah, I think everyone's excited. It's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. David?
I move to adjourn.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
Yes, you everyone.
See ya.